Just voting on councillor Young. And that's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Okay, so there are no items on the agenda, so we will move, we will move on to our first paper because there is no public participation today. And so we're going to move on to item 2.1. And I'd now like to invite Sean Murray, the petitioner, to present his petition to pedestrianise Courtney Place. No, my Sean, thank you for coming in today. And yeah, so if you'd like to present your petition now, it would be great.
Hi, good morning councillors and thanks for the opportunity to speak to this issue. We put a petition together for pedestrianising Courtney Place, after talking to a lot of businesses there, all very much in favour of it. We could get all the names together and go further on this, but there's a lot of support.
I'm just struggling to hear you, Sean. It's very muffled.
Yeah, that was mentioned before and I don't know what to do about it. Is it okay or?
Well, it's not just volume, it's muffle.
Move my computer closer. Does that change it at all?
It's worse.
Councillor officers, are we able to do anything from our end as far as sound is concerned?
Look, I think it is this computer. I could, in about two minutes, I could jump onto another one. Was it? Do you want me to continue?
What, what do people feel? I mean, I'm hearing it okay, but you'll have to probably be quite consistent in the direction that you're holding on the computer. What do other people feel?
I can actually hear it okay, but it's not loud.
Yeah, if you listen carefully, you can make out what Sean's saying.
And I've turned him right up.
Okay, how about we just keep going at this point, Sean, and we'll, we'll, we'll re-assist if it becomes a problem.
Okay, great. So the petition has had 958 signatures so far. It hasn't been circulated that widely, mainly due to COVID. But, you know, there was certainly support for this idea. So, so I've got a few minutes perhaps just to explain some thinking around pedestrianisation. First, first off, I'm a, a bar owner of the malt house in Courtney Place for me since 2007. And my wife's got a bar called Mockingbird down in Courtney Place. So we have a keen interest in what happens with Courtney. And we travel extensively to Europe. We go for kind of up to three months a year. And we're just always, we're always born to the pedestrianised areas, the piazzas, the likes of La Rumbler in Barcelona, Carnaby Street London, you know, Orchard Road, Singapore. There's, there's many examples. I've got, this PowerPoint's just got a few, a few photos. Perhaps you could put up the first one of slide two, which is La Rumbler. I doubt many people go to Barcelona and don't end up at La Rumbler at some stage. It's a fantastic space where you have street performers, you've got, you've just got a lot of people using the area, lots of kids. It feels great. And we don't quite have those beautiful buildings, but they've done some nice work with the pavours, for instance. I suppose just to go through this, the next one is Carnaby Street, which people know, with its side.
Just one second, sorry.
So Carnaby Street's been a pedestrian zone since, I think, the 60s. There's talk even now of pedestrianising Oxford Street, which has been pretty much the main street. Or it's going to be a shared zone. So there's definitely, the experience around the world is that people are finding pedestrianised areas are good for business. And it's a very short amount of time I've got to talk this morning, but there's plenty of reports, including one I saw even in Auckland that said pedestrianising up there, which they've been, they've been working on, at least to economic benefit. So which is always one of the first complaints of retailers, saying, take the cars away, take the citizens away. But doesn't seem to be true based on these studies. So, there's, I'll try and keep this fairly brief. The idea, if we were to, if, if, if the councillors were to entertain this idea, is to, is to make it a really nice space with pavours, trees. Street performers are just absolutely fantastic. I've seen huge crowds of people gather around street performers everywhere, like this and I've gone. And it just creates a really great atmosphere for for a variety of people. Where I think the problem right now with Courtney Place is it seems to be moving more and more towards the, a quite of a late night revelers space, which our bars in particular don't like, because we, we kind of do have an older, certainly not, not 20-year-olds. And a lot of our people get scared off actually by, I think we've been down in Courtney Place late at night, but it can be quite high at me. But really what's still is making a space where far more people of, of, of every age go. Tables out on the common areas, which would be ideally out onto the street. So there's just lots and lots of tables and it's, it's very conducive to dining and people just sitting and enjoying, you know, a nice evening that we we get every day in summer in Wellington. And so, so that would be the idea behind it. It's just to follow some of the examples around the world where pedestrianisation has worked really, really well.
Sean, we do have at least one question for you. Would you be ready for taking some questions now?
Yes, certainly.
Great, thank you. And councillor Sparrow has a question.
Yes, thanks for that, Sean. I'm sure most of us see a lot of merit in what you're suggesting. However, I guess the big problem would be where you'd be looking at excluding taxis, buses, e-scooters, et cetera. And I guess we'd be needing to look at where that, what route they would be taking instead. Do you have any suggestions in that regard?
Yeah, that is always the biggest issue. I mean, typically, these sort of spaces, I mean, they can't, you can't go as far as the shared space. So during the day, you can still have vehicle access because you've got to have deliveries to, you know, food and drink to bars. But there's always going to be a bit of, and I've been, I've been to Carnaby Street members delivering that, whatever's around. So you would have that taxis. I mean, a lot, a lot of details have to be thought through, but you know, there could be taxi stands on the likes of Allen Blair or Tory Street. You probably would keep it open from Tarraneki Street. So we've got, people don't have to go that far for taxis. The issue with buses is just, look, I, I, I don't know what your transport people would say, but whether they can use Cable Street. And what's the other one? Cable, Cable going north, what's one coming south? Whatever that one is. Can the, can the buses run, you know, past Tippapa? I'm not sure from a perfect opinion point of view, but that would be the, my suggestion.
Thank you, Sean. Councillor Foyd, you've got a question?
Sean, thank you for bringing this to us. And I agree with councillor Sparrow, where we've all got our eye on that vision. Well, I think a lot of us have anyway. What my question for you was around the recent street closures and some of the historic closures of Courtney Place. How did your business fare or what was your experience as a business when that happened?
The, the recent closure under COVID was at a level three or level two, wasn't it? It, it was helpful, but there's still not a lot of people, you know, all, all, all hospitality businesses are down on trade at this time. And we're desperately holding out for level one. But the likes of the Rugby Sevens, the Rugby World Cup, you know, they're just ridiculously huge. Massive for everyone, just the place was empty. And I think even we're stopping people getting into Courtney Place because there's too many. So it was a great atmosphere.
Right. Thanks, Sean. That was good to hear both perspectives.
I think that's all the questions that we have now, Sean, for you. Thank you very much for coming in to present the petition. You're welcome to continue watching. I understand the link has been sent to you for the meeting. And so please do feel free to obviously watch, watch the debate. So we are going to move on to debating this paper now. And I would like to invite councillor Calvert to introduce the report in, in call for a second there. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just get some clarification from Cyrus? We've just had some last minute changes to the suggested amendment. Do I need to move this pro forma or is it now with officers?
Through you, Madam Chair, I understand that officers support number two, so you wouldn't need to move pro forma. Can I get final confirmation from David too, please?
Through the chair, David Chick here. I am comfortable with that. And they are the words that I have provided to councillor Calvert.
Thank you. And we just added safety in there, David. I take it you're comfortable with that?
Happy with that. Just probably need a coma after safety.
Yeah, if you could do that, thank you. Okay, look, so then I don't need to move this pro forma then, do I, Cyrus?
No, you don't.
Okay, thank you. So look, I'm really pleased to be able to sort of introduce this petition. You've heard from Sean, he started this petition about three weeks ago and, and there's now well over 900 signatures. And as he said, it hasn't been that well advertised. Sean came to me after seeing in the media how the council was considering temporarily closing Courtney Place. And that was primarily a key risk management approach, because we didn't know what was going to happen when we moved to level two and whether people would be coming back into the city. But we also wanted to enable people to feel confident in coming back to the city and enabling they had a bit more space. So I do thank officers for helping enable that to happen. You know, whilst we didn't get quite as many people as we would have liked, it is good and it sets a good, strong signal. But, but this is probably something, an issue that's been going around for quite some time. And it's around, it's, I don't know, it's all about pedestrianising with Golden Mile. But there's also a huge place-making aspect to this, about where we want our city to be and how we want to see the, the vitality retained and grow in, in our, in particular in our CBD. This petition enables officers to go away and look at all the different aspects. Now, I'm certainly not expecting them to come back to us with a, a final solution in one month. But what we do know, and in particular from Lower Tory Street, is there needs to be planned to be good engagement and, and not just in the direct area, but in those areas that connect into, into the particular space. And so I don't underestimate the, the nature of the work that's required. But I think it would be good to get officers to be able to advise us on, on all these different aspects and how it fits into the let's get Welly moving. And, and how our council itself needs to lead on this particular piece of work, because it's about our city. And it's not primarily a transport matter, even though transport is a key part. This is actually about how we, how we envisage our city and, and the place-making around that. I would also like to thank councillor Paul for helping me with this and, and crafting the extra amendment. I think it's been really great because we've come from completely different perspectives, but we've ended up in the same place. So that's been great. So look, I'm going to leave it at that. And I look forward to your support.
Thank you. And councillor Paul, would you like to speak to us now?
Yeah, I'll just, I think councillor Calvert's covered off the economic kind of place-making elements of this possibility brought forward by this petition really well. I just wanted to echo those thanks to officers for preparing this report based on the petition. And I really just thank the almost 900 people who have brought this petition forward. I was just thinking how underrated e petitions are as a tool. They're very powerful. So, yeah, I think, I think it's a great thing. I just wanted to touch on this, the, the safety word just very briefly. We know that a large number of serious assaults in Wellington actually happen at the end of Courtney Place. And I think that really allows us to draw the connections between having a safe Courtney Place possibly, when we look at all of the redesigns, all the various projects going on, you've got let's get Wellington moving, innovating streets, accessible, accessible streets. It's really important that we, that safety is a big part of that as well. And I guess the final thing I'll say is that I think the pedestrianisation of Courtney Place could also really challenge some prevalent assumptions out there around cars and economic development, because we actually yesterday received our Wellington City Emissions Inventory results, which told us that although emissions have declined by seven percent and the population has grown by 24%, our local economy has grown by 59%. So I want us to really challenge our assumptions and to be leading in, in this country and in the world in the way that we have a centre that reduces emissions, it fosters good, healthy economic development as a place that people want to be and a place where people feel safe. So yeah, Kilda, thank you to all involved for bringing forward such a great petition and report.
Kilda, we have recorded all from councillor Young.
So thank you. So Courtney Place is my doorstep. I'm always happy when people spell it correctly, always happy to correct their spelling when they get it wrong. And I walk through there several times a day, except in the days of Zoom, when I spend most of my time where I am right now. So I'm lucky enough to have been to, I think, all the places that Sean showed us. And I have absolutely no doubt that pedestrianisation is fabulous for people spaces. You know, I was, in January, I was in Carnaby Street, not closed shop, and going to a great Indian restaurant with my daughter and grandson. And it's just great. You can, you know, he's not walk, he wasn't walking then, he is now, but I can't go and see him. And, you know, children can run around, they are safe, people are safe. It's just a really makes places a people-oriented, people-focused places. And to be honest, you know, you wander around and think, oh, let's go across and have a look at that shop. Or maybe I was popping and buying something. So I, I do believe that it is great for economic revival and sustainability. I didn't do any shopping because it was eight in the morning, we were there for brunch. But I, I think this is a great idea. So it would be terrific to investigate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pannett.
Sorry, thank you councillor Day. And thank you, Sean, for bringing this petition. It's fantastic. I'm possibly slightly closer to Courtney Place than councillor Young. So often walk through there. Look, I'd like us to encourage us to be brave and just make this the start of other streets that we close off. Let's be reasonably radical here. Streets are not just for vehicles to travel on or bikes. But they are actually for just hanging out or listening to music or dancing or whatever people want to do. And we could do some interesting things here. I guess councillor Free will be concerned about the buses. And this has always been the issue, is that it's a, it's a great idea until you just have to figure out what to do with public transport, because public transport should generally be very close to where people need to go. So it is a tricky one. And we will need that debate about, you know, essentially what then becomes the Golden Mile. But I'd just like to finalize, finish this by saying, we actually do have children in this area. Plenty of children in Mount Victoria, plenty of children in Tiato and Mount Cook. And so it's actually appropriate that we do make these child-friendly spaces so that, and, and for young people that they can get around safely. And we know, of course, that the hospitality industry needs every support that they can get, and I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Free.
Yeah, absolutely. That's exactly what I was going to say. I think the pedestrianisation is great. It's wonderful. But if you're going to have that, you're going to have fewer places people come in by car. And unfortunately, not all of us live right next to Courtney Place. Sure, many of us would like to, but we don't. So those of us who do live in the outer suburbs, repertory communities, where there's still significant transport challenges. So I would put my hand up and say along with great pedestrianisation, there has to be a great public transport system. And it has to deliver people close to where those great pedestrianisation areas are. So not to forget about that place. But thank you, Sean. That's a great petition and really well done. It's inspiring to see that that many people are prepared to put their names to this idea in such a short space of time.
Thank you, councillor Sparrow.
Again, thank you. And following on from other speakers, in the ideal world, it would be great to have this as part of a master plan, looking at pedestrianisation right through to and including the whole of Lampton Key. So and, but as the deputy mayor just said, more easily said than done, perhaps in terms of the public transport issues, but perhaps we can be over time, looking at the whole, the whole of that, but starting at Courtney Place.
Thank you. I've got councillor Young and then councillor Conde.
I've got a rogue cursor. I was just typing out a message, just a point of information. Iona lives 500 metres from the malt house. I live 700 metres, so she wins. She's 200 metres closer for when she's thirsty.
All right. Thank you, councillor Conde.
Thanks, everyone. I guess I just wanted to point out the work that is already happening in the let's get Wellington moving space around here, that's going to be coming to us very soon. And then to consultation with the public not too long after that, where we are looking at potentially taking out all the private vehicle traffic from the whole of the Golden Mile, which would include Courtney Place. Now, that wouldn't address the buses, that would leave the buses still there, but it's a big, would be a big step in the right direction of travel that we want to go in. The other thing that they're looking at is what we can do around places like Aaron, Allen and Blair Street, where, you know, those aren't important thoroughfares for movement. And so have, have more potential for us to be able to thoroughly pedestrianise those. So all that work is underway and is going to be coming to us and to the public very shortly, which is exciting.
Thank you, councillor Wolf.
Thanks, Sean. Really appreciate the, the petition and, and the near on thousand names within a short space of time. Yeah, I'm absolutely behind pedestrianising Courtney Place. It's, it's not just a, a great retail hospitality area. It's a historic precinct. And I've seen some, some really good work overseas, particularly in, in Europe, but more recently in Harbin in, in China, where, yeah, a, a main street like, or a piazza-like atmosphere was created in, in a place like Courtney Place that just invigorated that the whole area and became a a focal point for, for so many different aspects of the city. And, and your councillor Pannett has mentioned children. But there, there are so many other areas that, that come into this. So, you know, like, we have to be enlightened. And I think that this is one area that perhaps we, we could look at in, in, in a very responsive and agile way. But thank you for, for bringing it forward again. And, and, and thank councillor Calvert for working with councillor Paul and, and also pushing this along and, and having the trial. I think that, that having a trial two weeks ago was, was really useful. We didn't have a lot of people there, but it was, it was a successful trial. So, yeah, I'm right behind this.
And councillor Rush.
Thanks very much. Hi, Sean. Welcome. I just think that this area screams out for it. It's a no-brainer. Having lived in a number of cities around the world, you look at this and you go, why have they got that road going through there? So I think there's obviously a mood around the table to, to do this. Unfortunately, it's been thrown into let's get Wellington moving, which means it's going to be shoved back for decades. So we need to keep an eye on this because it really is an obvious one. I mean, the Wellington party actually did campaign on, on doing this, but putting a trackless tram up through there from the railway station. And that would remind me a wee bit of Amsterdam, which has a similar sort of setup. So anyway, a lot of thoughts out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have on the speaking order. And councillor Calvert, would you like a write-up reply?
Yes, I would actually. And there's a number of points and really just to sort of say, if anything was a, a project or initiative that should have fallen under innovating streets, this was it. Unfortunately, it sort of got overlooked. I don't know why, but anyway. I think councillor Young made some really good comments about being people orientated and this being people spaces. And I think that's what this is about. It's, and that's why, and I know there's some comments about let's get Welly moving. This should not be a let's get Welly moving project. This, yes, we need to look into it, but it needs to be an aspect, but this should be driven. This is a people orientated piece of work. Because this is, this is about our city. And I don't think I've ever been in quite so unison with councillor Pannett. It shows you a meeting of the minds. But anyway, yeah, no, I agree. And, and, and also talking about children, you know, how, you know, there are, you know, there are a lot of children living in our city now. And being able to have these sort of spaces that are safe and, and, and be able to experience the central city life is, is a great opportunity. And councillor Sparrow mentioned about the master plan. And, and I think that's really relevant, because when we look at this Courtney Place, we shouldn't just look at this particular piece, street. We need to look at the connecting streets like Blair and Allen, but we also need to look at how it's connected across to our waterfront, across to Tippapa and across to the nearby convention and exhibition centre. Because people visiting those will want to come into Courtney Place if we make it even more inviting. So, and, and look, just to round back on those, those number of submissions already, I did talk with Generation Zero. They were right behind it as well. They thought it was a great idea. So I think there may be a few of their signatories to that petition. So I think, you know, from everybody I've talked to, the key thing is that we need to engage. So this is not a dumb deal. The key thing is that we do need to engage and, and, and hear everybody's voices in this to come up with the best solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so now, and now I want to put the motion, which has been moved in seconded to the vote. So we've got it there. We'll look here. So voting is now open.
Just missing councillor Young and councillor Wolf.
Councillor Wolf's having trouble with his technology, but he's a yay.
Must be, must be a day for technology trouble.
I know, again, just, yeah, but I am definitely supportive. So count me in. I'm just trying to work it out.
Nodding, yes.
Okay, we'll save it. But is that unanimous? Great, thank you. And thank you again to Sean for presenting the petition and, and coming in to talk to us about that. As I said, you're welcome, Sean, to watch the rest of the meeting. But I realise you may have other things that you have to get on to today. But thank you for taking the time to come in and, and, and do this. And also for, for starting the petition. We really appreciate the community action. So thank you. Right, we will now move on to item 3.1, which is the Umar Odo Reservoir. And I would like to invite councillor Rush to introduce this paper.
Thank you councillor Day, Madam Chair. It is with great pleasure and delight that I am here. It is with great pleasure and delight that I am here to provide this paper for your consideration. I'd like to thank the officers, Wellington City Council, and more particularly the team at Wellington Water, who throughout the last six or eight weeks have performed outstandingly in their priorities, but have nevertheless managed to bring this paper that is without doubt complete to us. This is a project that is not glossy. There's no egos involved. But it is absolutely critical. This is an investment in water infrastructure. And we've heard criticism that we have not done enough in this space previously. This reservoir will provide safe drinking water and will provide for future growth. Although recent events may have slowed that growth, it is inevitable that growth will come and we need to provide for it. In fact, this project is overdue. A long history, starting in the 1970s, going right through to 2015, when we started looking more carefully. And over that time, of course, costs have changed and we've talked about those costs. In fact, the only thing controversial about this project is that the costs have grown. They've grown from the very speculative nature, which is is typical of major projects. They've been refined and they've been updated and now they stand at $68 million. It is affordable. There's not much choice in this regard. If we want a future Wellington that is able to provide drinking water to its population. But also the resilience that's needed to ensure that the central city is not closed through a lack of water. And we had a reminder in 2017 with a major pipe burst that we were hours away from being out of water. Calculations have been done by Wellington Electricity and by Infometrics that put the cost of shutting the CBD on a daily basis at somewhere between 70 and $100 million worth of GDP. This reservoir will ensure that we don't have to do that. In addition, there are great operational efficiencies that are involved in having a major reservoir, such as the size and nature near to the source, sorry, near to the areas of demand. Now we can manage the whole system from two source points. And that brings operational efficiencies. I'd like to congratulate Wellington Water for taking us patiently through the whole process by which this project was tended, was reviewed. I welcomed the input from the independent engineers. They gave us advice on other options. I think the competitive tender process is the best indication that we've got best value here. And in fact, that actually does provide the best peer review that you can get. The project is scoped at $68 million. It is a fixed price contract. We know, though, that fixed price contracts can move, but as far as projects go, I am confident that this is about as locked in as we can get. There has been some questions quite correctly asked about Wellington Water's capability. I'd like to read a finding from a Deloitte's review done last year on their capacity and capability of Wellington Water. This is what they say. Based on our interviews, it appears that Wellington Water has developed a very strong leadership team with a depth of relevant experience across all the critical dimensions of the organisation. Further, with the increased emphasis that government is putting on free waters, that capability is likely to be in demand. Goes on, we were equally impressed with the capability of the wider management team. In every instance, the interviewees appear to have a background, both technically and experience wise, that seem to strongly align with their current roles. As such, I think this council can have confidence that Wellington Water not only have the capability to execute this project, but actually should be executing this project, a lot of others as well. And we recently have seen examples of that capability. The Willis Dixon Street edit that collapsed just before Christmas. How they responded and they got that fixed on time as scheduled. Unfortunately, it was the day after lockdown. So all we saw was a picture of Willis Street that was empty. But there it was. And of course, recently, the sludge pipes. I mean, I raised at the time the complications that could arise about doing this project during lockdown, during a pandemic. And yet the crews got to New Zealand, were isolated and rigorously went through their chores of bringing those pipes back into operation again on schedule. As a consequence, I am comfortable that this is an investment in Wellington's future. It's overdue. And it will be robustly executed. So I look forward to any questions and debate.
Do you have a second for this paper? Councillor Pannett, would you like to speak to this now?
Thank you councillor Day and councillor Rush. Yeah. And thank you to Wellington Water and to our council staff, all the hard work that they have put on it. And on a positive note, the laying of the pipes has gone well. So I think there's some practical example of of the the ability to manage this project. However, I'm a little bit grumpy about this because obviously this is the second time that we've come back with a cost increase. And I'll just put this out there that maybe there could have been some understanding of what the new seismic standard meant. So anyway, we are where we are. And I guess we need to use this as a learning experience. That's why there was an amendment in the paper, in the library paper yesterday around costs. We should not be putting preliminary costs in our budget, or at least with a qualifier. Because this is, this has been part of the problem that as the project has changed or it's gone through the different stages of design. The cost has increased. And I don't think we want to possibly go back to the 70s, 80s and early 2000s to compare because the scope of the project has changed. So I think we need to take that into account. I also think that Mayor Foster will attest to the fact that we tried not to pay for the whole of this project. Remember, the hospital was supposed to pay, Greater Wellington was supposed to pay. And, you know, now we're left holding the baby, unfortunately. And, you know, I do think it's necessary. I think it would be irresponsible not to approve this project. We are extremely vulnerable to earthquakes in the city, obviously, and also vulnerable because we don't have our own water source. So I think we need to do it. I think also that I'd like to congratulate Wellington Water on working with the community and actually agreeing to a number of conditions like burying the infrastructure, which is good. The town belt does have a long and sad history of land being taken for sometimes important public infrastructure. And let's not get into the history of it being taken from indigenous peoples in the first place. But it does have an unfortunate history. And so I have stood robustly in defence of the fact that this needs to be buried so that it can be used as recreational space. I also was just reflecting on Waikiki. I was a little bit grumpy about the increase in costs when we were approving that. Now I'm not because obviously we've got a great building now that our central library has closed. So in other words, sometimes you just have to invest because when there is failure in another part of the network, you will need you will need other infrastructure to work. So I think it's that's a good analogy. Councillor Rush didn't talk about the sunk cost. We have now put $20 million into this project to walk away and find another site. Would mean that's the kind of money that we're losing, which I don't think we can afford. And I think, given the amount of work that's been put in in terms of consenting, that it does need to go in. As well, I think the economic case is strong. You know, we just cannot turn off the water to the city. It's just, it's just too big to fail. This really is the case where that phrase does apply. I am okay about postponing Bell Road. I wasn't entirely convinced this was a good project. There was a cost blowout on that in 2018 as well. We're not getting any extra capacity from that. So I think I would like us to have a good think about the best way to meet our needs. And generally, if we're going to do a big infrastructure spend, I would like more capacity. There may be some questions around governance. And I think we've got a an issue here about how we act as governors on these complex infrastructure projects. And I think that there will need to be some more internal discussion. We will have the chance to look at these through the quarterly reports, obviously, and reports back from Wellington Water. But we might just need to give a bit more thought to how we do that in a constructive way because it is a very, very big job. And this is Wellington Water's first major infrastructure project for Wellington City, as you know. So there may be some, you know, bumps in the road, but hopefully not. So look, I, I think that is really clear. We need to go ahead with this. We need to approve the money. We need to hold Wellington Water to account to make sure that the project is carried out properly, but also give them our support too. I know how hard they have worked with our community in Mount Cook. They literally having a contractor taking people's rubbish down to the street when streets were closed off for collection. Like that was the level of attention and commitment that was made. They've done a really good job. And so we just need to get on with it and get it open.
So I have a speaking order here of councillors Young, Fitzsimons, Frey and Mayor Foster. Mayor Foster, I thought you'd fallen off your chair because you disappeared from the other view, but I can see you there. Thank you. Councillor Young.
So first of all, I'd just like to give a big shout out to comrade Paul Eagle, who is our former deputy mayor, who was the one who sort of bringing over the, what we call the German engineers, but I gather they're actually British, but via Germany. So that was fantastic. He got it sorted out with the Air New Zealand and the embassy. So I'd also like to thank all the people who have contacted me with their views, some highly informed, some highly opinionated. Helpful, but we can't always do what everybody wants. In fact, we can never do what everybody wants. But thank you. I'm extremely aware of our city's vulnerability. That's why I have two emergency water tanks now empty about to be cleaned. I hope I don't need them in the next two days. But I also just would remind people that water is an incredibly precious resource. And I do find it extraordinary, the opposition to water meters. This is something I have bleated on about before. I just won't give up. We really should have water meters. And I love it because it upsets Iona because really fundamentally, she probably does agree. Anyway, I support this project.
Thank you, councillor Fitzsimons.
Thank you. I've got an amendment to bring. So do you want to bring that up on the screen now? All right. I just want to, so I still have outstanding concerns about Wellington Water's ability to manage this project. And I have considered a protest vote against it. But I think that would be irresponsible, given the importance in terms of resilience and public health of this project. So what I did want to do, though, is go through the constant cost increases that this project has faced and then introduce an amendment which at least attempts to note some of the lessons and some of the safeguards that the council is putting in place for the future because I didn't feel that I could keep supporting this project, given the constant cost increases without it. So I just want to quickly go through them. In 2013, the cost estimate was 17.9 million. It was controversially high at that time. In 2017, in 2013, that was. In 2017, it was increased to 29.5 billion. In 2018, it was increased to 40.9 million. In March 2019, it was increased to 58.2 billion. In June 2019, it was increased to 66.7 billion. In February 2020, the cost estimate was increased to 66.9 million. And we have another cost increase which we're discussing today. Given this, I did want to introduce an amendment which at least attempts to note the accountability and reporting mechanisms that the council was putting in place. I am concerned about the distance between elected members and this big project because at the end of the day, we have the accountability back to residents for the success of the project and also the spending of ratepayers' money. I do consider that there is a much bigger issue here around how Wellington deals with major infrastructure projects. Wellington Water hasn't done a project of this scale and this magnitude and this cost in the past. And this is no reflection on the individuals who are in Wellington Order at this time. But we simply can't have a large-scale infrastructure projects reliant on a small number of key individuals, which is what the defence is. Our defence seems to be every time concerns are raised about Wellington Water. We need the type of modern Ministry of Works that has been discussed to make sure that Wellington's major infrastructure projects can be delivered on time and on budget. And that's something that I would like to see the whole region look at because I do think that we need to centralise the expertise in delivering major infrastructure projects. But in terms of the amendment, which I was about to announce, I really just, it really just captures the, what I understand, officers are posing in terms of the major, the reporting and monitoring framework. I had asked officers to draft an amendment and they did give me a series of this information around what is happening. Unfortunately, I don't have all of the detail about exactly who was on the Significant Project Governance Group. I did want to include the introduction of the procurement office, but I'm hoping that councillors will respect that this has come from officers and support this amendment. And look, if I don't need to get some officer advice about particularly the regularity of meetings or exactly how it will work, I hope that you'll be happy to indulge that. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll be seconding that amendment, but I will save my speaking. So Mayor Foster, I think we'd like to speak to this.
Thanks. Actually, I was, I wasn't sure if councillor Fitzsimons had a second. So I was putting my hand up to offer to do that, but that's fine. I think this is sensible. The other thing just to mention is that we also now, we already agreed that the six month, we'll agree shortly, the six month monitoring of this to this committee. But also this comes back to, as all major projects do, comes back to finance, audit and risk every three months to look at in detail to see how things are going. I've got to say, I'm going to be particularly interested in the monitoring of the of the contingency. And the contingency is now relatively small because it's been, it's been narrowed down. So as councillor Rush said, we've got a, we've got a fixed price with a relatively small contingency in it, but we can still monitor that. The other bit that I'm going to be particularly interested in in terms of the costs is when we were briefed on this, is the potential for some savings to be made if we are smart with the disposal of of the soil and rock from the site. So if anybody out there is wanting 35 million cubic, sorry, 30, 35, a lot of cubic metres, 35 cubic megalitres, that's not right, of soil and rock, we're all ears. We're looking forward to hearing from you and certainly be asking our team see whether there's any place that we can put that because if we have to put it into landfill or the contract has to put it into landfill, it's a cost of anything up to around one and a half million dollars. So there's some potential for some saving there. So I think the intent is right that we've got to make sure that we monitor these projects all the way through. And look, the other thing I was just going to say, I was going to say a few things on the substantive. But I might as well deal with them now. If you're okay with that, Jill. Then I don't have to speak a second. Look, so we'll go back to that. I just want to say thank you to Sean for his diligence in not only this project, but also over the last few months in looking after some of the other the other projects that Wellington Water has been working on. And I know that we've both been down, for example, to look at the Mount Albert Tunnel site on a number of occasions. And I know that I think, Sean, you've also been out to Kilkenny to talk with the residents there affected by that piece of work. And I wanted to thank Wellington Water too for their diligence. I mean, the last few months, certainly since the pipe break in in Willis Street and then the Mount Albert one, and then also the work they've done, which hasn't been mentioned on relining the Moa Point sewer interceptor, which was a vital piece of work, has been exceptional. They've moved quickly. They've worked really well with the local communities. And and they've done, I think, an incredibly good job. So I think we need to praise them for that. And I also wanted to thank our officers for the hard work that's gone into this as well. And I think between Wellington Water and council offices, we are much better informed about this project and about how we've got to this particular point. The other thing I was going to say is, this is, as some others have said, this is vital infrastructure. It's our core infrastructure. It's a necessary piece of investment. I think there's any doubt about that. It gives us additional resilience for what we call the low zone. So the central city and all that area out to Newtown, Rau Valley. So without this, in the event of a major So without this, in the event of a, a major emergency or, um, if a pipe broke, we are, uh, at greater risk of running out of water, particularly as the city grows. But the other thing I wanted to mention is just the, the long history around this. Now, um, councillor Fitzsimons mentioned the cost escalation, but I think the message, the big learning out of this is that we, we've, when we put these projects in the budgets, and we have to do that, when we put a number in there, that number is not necessarily set in stone. So this, the, the number that we were talking about was put in our budgets eight years ago. So, and a lot has changed and the scope of the project has changed. It's bigger than it was. It's underground. Uh, we have different seismic conditions. And we were also expecting half of the cost to be paid by the hospital. None of those are true now. So we're not comparing apples with apples at all. So sometimes we get ourselves in a position where these things are described as cost blowouts. But in fact, they're a completely different project and funded in a completely different way. So I think what we need to do in it, you know, we, we have the library conversations already come up. I think councillor Panet mentioned it, uh, from yesterday. We've got to be clear about what it is we're talking about and what it is we're not talking about. And possibly to be putting in a range of, of costs. I know, for example, when the shovel ready list went in, uh, to government, but most of the, most of the projects had a, you know, a, a number which was put against them. There was one project though, that had a cost range of two hundred and fifty million dollars to one point two five billion dollars. So that's what I call a range. That's a very wide range. But we've got to be, I guess the, the message is that we've got to be really clear about what we know about a project at any given time and what we don't know about a project at any given time and what the assumptions are. Uh, and the, the last couple of points to make, um, this has been proposed in the shovel ready list. I think the point that's been made about the hospital being supposed to pay for part of it, hopefully, is another reason why the government ought to come to the party on this particular project. And I know that water is, uh, is at the top of the shovel ready list. And the final, uh, point to make is that we, um, we also need to think about how we pay for this. And so there's a, there's a growth related element to this, and that should certainly be picked up through development contributions rather than rates over time. Uh, and as I was already mentioned, the shovel ready projects. I think that's all I needed to say, uh, just, but say thanks again for all the hard work that's been, uh, that's gone into getting us this far and, uh, looking forward to seeing this project delivered.
Thank you, councillor Kelvert.
Um, thank you. And can I talk to the substantive as well at the same time? Let's say, yeah, look, um, um, thank you, um, councillor Fitzsimons for bringing this forward. Um, I think it is really important that we make sure there is strong governance. I'm probably a little bit less concerned about Wellington Water being able to manage this because I think we will have some, um, tight controls, um, in place. Um, and, and I, I sort of look at, at the number of projects our council has done, um, and, and how costs have escalated. And, um, you know, dear, I mentioned the Island Bay Cycle Way, which has gone from, I don't know, a couple of million now to potentially costing twenty eight million. Um, if they get the fourteen million funding from, um, government for a one point seven kilometre stretch, but anyway. Um, you know, so look, uh, it's a bit like the pop calling kettle black and, you know, um, which, you know, an old saying, I have to say. Um, so look, and as the mayor said, we will, um, um, through the Finance Orders and Risk Committee, we're, uh, getting, um, evolving, maturing reports about significant projects. And I think we'll be able to also be, um, be in the position to have stronger oversight into a number of these significant projects, um, by the council or by its, um, agents. So I will be supporting, um, this amendment. Um, and I also want to just thank, um, our officers and also in particular the Wellington Water officers for, um, um, helping us to get to this point and, um, taking on board feedback. Um, and also thank you councillor Rush. I know this has been a challenge to find a way through. Um, and, um, yeah, I think we've got to the, to the right, um, place. So thank you. And I will be supporting the amendment and the paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillor Rush, did you want to speak now? Or you did have your hand up, but was that before?
I, I was gonna, um, um, see if officers had anything to say, but, uh, I've since had separate conversation with officers. And so I don't have anything to say to the amendment.
Thank you. Um, councillor Frey, uh, sorry, dear Premier Frey.
Thank you. Um, look, I think we've actually got to a good point with this project and, uh, do agree that the price has gone up. But when I think about the history, as the mayor has pointed out, there's been several reasons for that. And, um, we are where we are. Um, it was very good to take the extra time that we did and hear from the engineers. I'm quite reassured about the fact that it will be a strong structure and that they're thinking about how to meet the new earthquake codes, because the last that we want is more earthquake prone, any things in our city. Um, I don't think you can even talk about an economic case when it comes to something as fundamental as water. If we need it, we need it. And I think we do. Um, if lockdown showed me anything, it was how much we need those everyday things like clean water, toilets that flush, streets that are clean, you know, nice parks in our local neighbourhood. Um, we absolutely must have this water. I think it's a really good thing, however, that we're going to be monitoring it quite closely. So I'm really happy to support, um, councillor Fitzsimons' amendment here. I thank you for bringing it forward. I thank you for having the conversations with officers to make it clearer to us all how this actually has got some extra oversight. It's important that it goes well and it's delivered. It doesn't cause more than a disruption to our residents than it needs to. So I think delivering it in efficient and effective manner, manner matters. Because I know that, um, the tracking and there are various things that are going to have to take place will be quite disruptive for our residents. We want it to go well. Um, it's a really, uh, good, um, thing that we're thinking about the soil because the last thing we actually want to do with that soil is put it up the, up Brooklyn on lots of trucks and into our landfill. If it can go somewhere useful, that's a really good thing. Um, the funding was a really good question. Um, I too remember the conversations about the hospital potentially paying for some of it. Um, Greater Wellington, I don't know about that, their contribution. But I think it's really important that we put this forward as a shovel ready project. And if anything, in my opinion, needed deserved funding, it's this. It's really important for the region that the water goes to the hospital if needed and that the city continues to have water in an emergency. So I think there's a really strong case for us to lobby hard on getting some funding for this. Um, I'm also really interested to note that the strategy of Wellington Water is that households and businesses should have their own seven-day supply. And I'd like to see a lot more done to actually encourage that to happen. I think, um, we were told only twenty nine to thirty percent of businesses and households currently have that. So that's, um, something that seems to be a bit lacking to me. We need a plan to, um, encourage people to have the water tanks like councillor, um, Young does. So this is a really important project. It's really good to be able to approve it. Um, I have confidence in Wellington Water. They know that we're watching them. They know that they have to do well. I've actually got confidence. I've watched what they've been, how they've performed and fixed a lot of, um, issues that have arisen lately. And I know that they'll be, um, totally on their mettle in delivering this for us. And also would like to thank Sean, um, he has worked really hard. I've never felt better informed about what's happening in the water space. So thank you, Sean. I know you're passionate about it. And it's, it's coming through and it's really helpful for us.
I'm, I'm going to just speak quickly now and I'll also speak to the substantive so we can save time on the other side. Um, I just want to, uh, thank councillor Fitzsimons for this amendment. Um, I, I really want to acknowledge your scrutiny. I think it's really important that we do have that in a project like this. Obviously, it's, it's the span of my lifetime and some others on council. So it's, it's had a long history and the challenge with that is the number of people who have interacted with it and, and worked with it. And so you can understand how things, um, do change over time and also the, the needs of the project and the earthquake resilience and, and all of those things. So I do also want to acknowledge the work of Wellington Water to keep us informed, to, um, send us as much information as possible. We really do appreciate that. It makes it so much harder when it comes to making a decision. I'd also like to acknowledge, um, my fellow councillor, councillor Rush. Um, I think you hit the ground running when you were elected to council. Um, yeah, it was welcome to council. It's Christmas. Hang on, we've got pipes, um, leaking around the place. So you've done really well getting your, um, head around what are some really big issues. And again, very hard to come in on a project which is, um, well through, but has a, a very, um, challenging process and history to it. Um, thank you, Mayor Foster, for mentioning, um, the, the rubble and the soil that will come out of there. Um, I have a solution. Uh, we have a park up in the northern suburbs, Granada North Sports Grounds, which has the opposite issue with water. It floods quite frequently and really, um, officers have said the best solution would be to be able to lay drainage and then build up on top of it. So we have a solution and it is in our long-term plan to deal with that park because it will be a significant sports ground for a growing community. So, yeah, I'd like people to take note of that because I think there's a good opportunity there. Um, and I think, I just want to say it is disappointing to be facing cost escalations like this. Um, I agree with Mayor Foster that we need to make sure when we are earmarking projects early on that we do, we do look at what the different options are and what that could mean in a range of costs. Because it is very hard when people originally are involved and agree to something to then have to sort of look at it and keep seeing it go up. It, it is overwhelming and it makes it hard to, um, to help the community come along on that journey as well. So, um, you're very happy to support this amendment and, um, and really want to see this reservoir. Um, therefore the community, um, to keep people in Wellington healthy and, and well, particularly resilient. Uh, so what we'll do now is, um, councillor Fitzsimons, do you have a write-up reply or are you?
Well, just very briefly, um, to pick up on the comments, uh, that you did as well, councillor Day from the mayor around the soil. There are a number of enthusiastic residents in Brooklyn who have got lots of ideas for how that's, where that soil can go, uh, so that it doesn't have to go in trucks to landfill. Uh, I too have a park in my ward that my children play football at called Leardet Park, which you have to wear gum boots to when you're watching football games. And it's quite near where the reservoir is going. So I think that would be a good candidate for, uh, some of that soil as well. And the residents that there have been advocating for this, uh, for some time. Nothing further.
All right. So I'm going to put this amendment to the vote. So please, um, vote accordingly. Oh, sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Sorry, that's unanimous.
Oh, great. Thank you. Sounds like we might be heckling over soil soon. Um, I think it's probably a good time now to break for morning tea. So we'll have, um, fifteen minutes now and then we'll come back to the, um, to the substantive motion. So, um, that will make it, uh, ten to eleven. So, so you'll say, remember to turn your camera off and your... So that will make it 10 to 11. So so also remember to turn your camera off and your.
Yeah, job. Top job.
Yeah, you get a right of reply.
I do. I do. I did. I am going to point this out to councillor Pennington. I was wondering if she was second doing this at one stage or not.
We are still live streaming at the moment.
Oh. Are we still on livestream?
Yeah. So we live stream the whole way through.
Okay.
Otherwise it creates separate little videos, which makes it harder for the public to watch. So I think we've, I'll just check with officers if we have a quorum back. I don't think we do quite. We might be one person shy. Oh no, we've got eight.
Is there marginal farmland around their coast? Because in Taranaki, they take soil from drilling wells and put it on marginal land and have created very, very profitable fertile properties.
Hmm. It's something we can, we can bring up when you do your right of reply.
You can take the boy out of Hookspay, but.
All right. We're going to get back underway. So I'm going back to substantive motion and the next person on the speaking order was deputy mayor Free. However, when you spoke to the amendment, you spoke to the substantive and Mayor Foster was the same. You've already spoken. And then councillor Paul, I think you've decided you didn't need to be on the speaking order. Is that right?
Yeah.
Cool. So I don't have anyone else on the speaking order for the substantive motion. And if that's the case, then we can go back to councillor Rush for his right of reply.
Well, thanks very much. And thank you very much for those comments directed at me personally for once. The nice ones. Yeah, I mean, so, so just on cost. So we've gone over this and it has been a learning experience. And so I've mentioned before, my dad's a builder. He'll tell me that to build a house costs you about $2,500 per square metre. Of course, then you tell him it's on sand, then it goes up. If you say it's up a hill, it's even more. And if it's two story, you know, so you get, you get the thinking as, as the scope of the project narrows, then the costs get, get better and more firm. So, I mean, I don't really have much more to say. I do welcome councillor Fitzsimons' amendment. As a former head of projects at London Law Firm, my instinct is to get it amongst it and to, you know, to get it on this project steering group and so forth. But I do need to stand back and be a governor and not a manager. So, but I will be incorporating an enhanced reporting arrangement from the ELT on this project and from Wellington Water directly to me that, that I will, as a consequence, be, be on top of this. You know, it would be, I'd love to say I state my reputation on this all going well, but I ain't going to because I know that projects grow arms and legs. But we've done what we can to minimise the risk of a serious problem. And I'm confident that, that this will go ahead. So what I'll finish up by saying is that it's nice to be building something and not repairing something. And let's get on with it.
Thank you. So now that we have the motion, which has been moved and seconded, it's time to vote. So if you could all vote accordingly. Great. Thank you. Right. Now we're going to move on to item 3.2, which is a public health bylaw and the parents industry interim report back. And so I'd like to invite councillor Fitzsimons to introduce the report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to start by thanking the officers who have done a huge amount of work on this, actually. In particular, Kate Hodgets and Helen Jones. They've really intensively worked on making sure that we are well placed to develop a bylaw that puts public safety at the centre of the regulatory framework. They've visited Auckland, they've looked at what they're doing, they've had a number of conversations with the people in the hut who are working on a similar bylaw. Um, I guess I just thought it would be helpful, and forgive me, I've got a few different bits of paper here, so I might, I might struggle with aspects of it. But um, I thought it might be helpful to start with the background to this. So basically, the background is that in 2018, the regional public health based here in Wellington did a report into nail salons. The report was quite alarming in its findings. It included a number of nail salons in Wellington City. And some of the findings included that it was limited understanding about bloodborne viruses, including HIV, hepatitis B, hepatitis C. And there was really a lack of understanding around cleaning, disinfecting and hygienically storing instruments, many of which were used for cutting the surface of the skin and sometimes would involve blood. The large majority of the, the operators had no written infection control procedures. The reports from regional public health into the Wellington nail salons notes that Napier, Dunedin, Masterton, South Wadarepa, Stratford, Ruapahu, Timaru and Auckland all have bylaws that cover the licensing and inspection regimes for beauticians, tattoo parlors, salons and body pierces. And in light of this report that was done locally and raised a whole lot of concerns, Wellington City Council passed a resolution which at the time was seconded by councillor Young after councillor Calvert, who was very keen on it, had to, had to step out of the room to take the next steps towards bylaw. And this at the time was unanimously supported around the council table. The regional public health report also notes that the industry, so the nail salon industry overwhelmingly wants regulation. Our officers have done the work on this. They have determined that the legal test for a bylaw has been met. And that is that there is a strong case to regulate. And I'll refer people to paragraphs 15 to 21 of the report from officers, which talks about the type of harm that can result from services that involve contact with the body, including risks of infection, disease and injury, and talks about needles and the risks that come when, when pressure is applied or the body is penetrated. It also talks about the possibility of carcinogenic risks through ultraviolet light used in sunbeds and the chemical exposure risks during manicure and pedicure treatments. And also the risks associated with the heavy metals contained in tattoo inks. Um, it also notes the lack of understanding among the public about how to complain. So we know that regional public health have done a report. We know that ACC has a number of complaints to it. But there's also a general concern around a lack of a place to go to complain. And I know that when, when we made that decision to take the next step towards a bylaw late last year, there were a number of people who emailed me and texted me photographs of their infected toenails and fingers. And also a number of GPs that got in touch to say, this is really important work, regulation is needed in this industry. We do see increasing numbers of people that come to us with concerns about it. So in terms of what we're trying to do here, if you look at the paper, paragraph 33 of the paper talks about the policy objectives of what this bylaw is trying to achieve. And just briefly, they are improved health and hygiene practice, improved consumer awareness and making it easy for businesses to comply. When we passed it, we also talked about the importance of looking at what other councils are doing around the country, particularly the hut who were embarking on this journey around the same time as us, although they were a bit ahead of us. But they talked about a whole range of issues around what a regulatory framework needed to contain. It talked about the types of restricted practices. And you'll see there that the hut bylaw restricts things like eyeball tattooing and the use of heel blade razors. And also issues around the age of consent. So making sure that there is actually genuine consent given to the treatment or the, the, you know, what is happening. It also talks about the regulation being responsive to new and emerging practices. And that's something that the review of the Auckland bylaw is looking at in particular. What has emerged since they originally passed that bylaw in 2013 that has changed and might need regulatory and inspection framework? And it also talks around the importance of having a notification regime around that informing, making operators inform the medical officer of health if there have been injuries or infections that they are aware of. So we also know that by imposing a regulatory framework, we improve the labour conditions of those people who work in it. There's a novel by Upton Sinclair, which I remember studying at university called The Jungle on this very issue in the meat processing industry in the United States. And it was the shock and horror of the community about the unsanitary practices that actually led to increased benefits for the workers there. I also just want to comment, I know there is widespread concern around the table, which I share, about the importance of government regulating here and really whether it's our role to be regulating or whether we should be expecting government to do it. I did kind of want to make, I guess the key point I would make on that is LGNZ passed a resolution asking government to regulate. They still haven't. Ministry of Health have indicated it's unlikely to happen. And this morning I got an email from Annette Nisdale, Dr Annette Nisdale, who is from Regional Public Health, who would have liked to have come to present to us today but was unavailable. And she said, Wellington City Council is increasing, is an increase in an increasingly small number of councils that do not have a bylaw. But the second point she made is also the point that one of our officers made, which is that national regulation is likely to be years away, particularly given that the large proportion of the population is now covered by bylaws. So I think increasingly the fact that the rest of the country is doing it is going to mean it's actually less likely that governments are going to come in and regulate here. So I think that if anything, the case is stronger. But I did want to acknowledge that there is that feeling around the table and I share that. I also just want to comment on the tweets last night from infectious, infectious diseases specialist in Wellington Hospital, Dr Aisha Vero, who talked about infections from the procedures that would cover, would be covered by this bylaw can be nasty, drug resistant and disfiguring. And that there are tried and true hygiene practices that should be standard. And this morning I received an email from a person who raised concerns about the tattoo industry in Wellington. She said it's alarmingly exploitative. Shops will take as much as half their contractors income while subjecting them to hazardous substances with little or no training on how to handle them. They go on, I have personal experience with a studio that deliberately only hires young female apprentices who are unaware of their rights as contractors in order to more easily manipulate them. Moreover, I've seen studios where animals, dogs, cats roam freely around the studio, contaminating sterile areas with no regulation of the industry. The owners of these studios continue to make the industry unsafe for both contractors and clients. And they are asking for regulation in supporting this. And so just finally, I want to comment because I know that around the table or around the Zoom, there is a lot of concern about the costs. And I do want to acknowledge that. I guess the point I would make is that we're doing this bylaw for the first time in 2018. And 2018 is the first time we've done this bylaw for the first time in 2018. And 2018 is the first time we've done this bylaw for the first time in 2018. And 2018 is the first time we've done this bylaw for the first time in 2018. And 2018 is the first time we've done this bylaw for the first time in 2018.
We are still live streaming at the moment.
Oh. Are we still on livestream?
Yeah. So we live stream the whole way through.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise it creates separate little videos, which makes it harder for the public to watch. So I think we've, I'll just check with officers if we have a quorum back. I don't think we do quite. We might be one person shy. Oh no, we've got eight.
Is there marginal farmland around their coast? Because in Taranaki, they take soil from drilling wells and put it on marginal land and have created very, very profitable fertile properties.
Hmm. It's something we can, we can bring up when you do your right of reply.
You can take the boy out of Hookspay, but.
All right. We're going to get back underway. So I'm going back to substantive motion. And the next person on the speaking order was deputy mayor Free. However, when you spoke to the amendment, you spoke to the substantive. And Mayor Foster was the same. You've already spoken. And then councillor Paul, I think you've decided you didn't need to be on the speaking order. Is that right?
Yeah.
Cool. So I don't have anyone else on the speaking order for the substantive motion. And if that's the case, then we can go back to councillor Rush for his right of reply.
Well, thanks very much. And, and thank you very much for those comments directed at me personally for once. The nice ones. Yeah, I mean, so, so just on cost. So we've, we've gone over this and it has been a learning experience. And so I've mentioned before, my dad's a builder. He'll tell me that to build a house costs you about $2,500 per square metre. Of course, then you tell him it's on sand, then it goes up. If you say it's up a hill, it's even more. And if it's two storey, you know, so you get, you get the, the, the thinking as, as the scope of the project narrows, then the costs get, get, gets better and more firm. So, I mean, I, I don't really have much more to say. I, I do welcome councillor Fitzsimons' amendment. As, as a former head of projects at a London law firm, my instinct is to get it amongst it and to, you know, to get it on, on this project steering group and so forth. But I do need to stand back and be a governor and not a manager. So, but I will be incorporating a, an enhanced reporting arrangement from the ELT on this project and from Wellington Water directly to me that, that I will, as a consequence, be, be on top of this. You know, it would be, I'd love to say I'll state my reputation on this all going well, but I ain't going to because I know that projects grow arms and legs. But we've done what we can to minimise the, the risk of, of a, a serious problem. And I'm, I'm confident that, that this will go ahead. So what I'll finish up by saying is that it's nice to be building something and not repairing something. And let's get on with it.
Thank you. So now that we have the motion, which has been moved and seconded, it's time to vote. So if you could all vote accordingly.
It's unanimous.
Great. Thank you. Right. Now we're going to move on to item 3.2, which is a public health bylaw and the parents industry interim report back. And so I'd like to invite councillor Fitzsimons to introduce the report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to start by thanking the officers who have done a huge amount of work on this, actually. In particular, Kate Hodgets and Helen Jones. They've really intensively worked on making sure that we are well placed to develop a bylaw that puts public safety at the centre of the regulatory framework. They've visited Auckland, they've looked at what they're doing, they've had a number of conversations with the people in the hut who are working on a similar bylaw. Um, I guess I just thought it would be helpful, and forgive me, I've got a few different bits of paper here, so I might, I might struggle with aspects of it. But um, I thought it might be helpful to start with the background to this. So basically, the background is that in 2018, the regional public health based here in Wellington did a report into nail salons. The report was quite alarming in its findings. It included a number of nail salons in Wellington City. And some of the findings included that it was limited understanding about bloodborne viruses, including HIV, hepatitis B, hepatitis C. And there was really a lack of understanding around cleaning, disinfecting and hygienically storing instruments, many of which were used for cutting the surface of the skin and sometimes would involve blood. The large majority of the, the operators had no written infection control procedures. The reports from regional public health into the Wellington nail salons notes that Napier, Dunedin, Masterton, South Wadarepa, Stratford, Ruapahu, Timaru and Auckland all have bylaws that cover the licensing and inspection regimes for beauticians, tattoo parlors, salons and body piercers. And in light of this report that was done locally and raised a whole lot of concerns, Wellington City Council passed a resolution which at the time was seconded by councillor Young after councillor Calvert, who was very keen on it, had to, had to step out of the room to take the next steps towards bylaw. And this at the time was unanimously supported around the council table. The regional public health report also notes that the industry, so the nail salon industry overwhelmingly wants regulation. Our officers have done the work on this. They have determined that the legal test for a bylaw has been met. And that is that there is a strong case to regulate. And I'll refer people to paragraphs 15 to 21 of the report from officers, which talks about the type of harm that can result from services that involve contact with the body, including risks of infection, disease and injury, and talks about needles and the risks that come when, when pressure is applied or the body is penetrated. It also talks about the possibility of carcinogenic risks through ultraviolet light used in sunbeds and the chemical exposure risks during manicure and pedicure treatments. And also the risks associated with the heavy metals contained in tattoo inks. Um, it also notes the lack of understanding among the public about how to complain. So we know that regional public health have done a report. We know that ACC has a number of complaints to it. But there's also a general concern around a lack of a place to go to complain. And I know that when, when we made that decision to take the next step towards a bylaw late last year, there were a number of people who emailed me and texted me photographs of their infected toenails and fingers. And also a number of GPs that got in touch to say, this is really important work, regulation is needed in this industry. We do see increasing numbers of people that come to us with concerns about it. So in terms of what we're trying to do here, if you look at the paper, paragraph 33 of the paper talks about the policy objectives of what this bylaw is trying to achieve. And just briefly, they are improved health and hygiene practice, improved consumer awareness and making it easy for businesses to comply. When we passed it, we also talked about the importance of looking at what other councils are doing around the country, particularly the hut who were embarking on this journey around the same time as us, although they were a bit ahead of us. But they talked about a whole range of issues around what a regulatory framework needed to contain. It talked about the types of restricted practices. And you'll see there that the hut bylaw restricts things like eyeball tattooing and the use of heel blade razors. And also issues around the age of consent. So making sure that there is actually genuine consent given to the treatment or the, the, you know, what is happening. It also talks about the regulation being responsive to new and emerging practices. And that's something that the review of the Auckland bylaw is looking at in particular. What has emerged since they originally passed that bylaw in 2013 that has changed and might need regulatory and inspection framework? And it also talks around the importance of having a notification regime around that informing, making operators inform the medical officer of health if there have been injuries or infections that they are aware of. So we also know that by imposing a regulatory framework, we improve the labour conditions of those people who work in it. There's a novel by Upton Sinclair, which I remember studying at university called The Jungle on this very issue in the meat processing industry in the United States. And it was the shock and horror of the community about the unsanitary practices that actually led to increased benefits for the workers there. I also just want to comment, I know there is widespread concern around the table, which I share, about the importance of government regulating here and really whether it's our role to be regulating or whether we should be expecting government to do it. I did kind of want to make, I guess the key point I would make on that is LGNZ passed a resolution asking government to regulate. They still haven't. Ministry of Health have indicated it's unlikely to happen. And this morning I got an email from Annette Nisdale, Dr Annette Nisdale, who is from Regional Public Health, who would have liked to have come to present to us today but was unavailable. And she said, Wellington City Council is increasing, is an increase in an increasingly small number of councils that do not have a bylaw. But the second point she made is also the, the point that one of our officers made, which is that national regulation is likely to be years away, particularly given that the large proportion of the population is now covered by bylaws. So I think increasingly the fact that the rest of the country is doing it is going to mean it's actually less likely that governments are going to come in and regulate here. So I think that if anything, the case is stronger. But I did want to acknowledge that there is that feeling around the table and I share that. I also just want to comment on the tweets last night from infectious, infectious diseases specialist in Wellington Hospital, Dr Aisha Vero, who talked about infections from the procedures that would cover, would be covered by this bylaw can be nasty, drug resistant and disfiguring. And that there are tried and true hygiene practices that should be standard. And this morning I received an email from a person who raised concerns about the tattoo industry in Wellington. She said it's alarmingly exploitative. Shops will take as much as half their contractors income while subjecting them to hazardous substances with little or no training on how to handle them. They go on, I have personal experience with a studio that deliberately only hires young female apprentices who are unaware of their rights as contractors in order to more easily manipulate them. Moreover, I've seen studios where animals, dogs, cats roam freely around the studio, contaminating sterile areas with no regulation of the industry. The owners of these studios continue to make the industry unsafe for both contractors and clients. And they are asking for regulation in supporting this. And so just finally, I want to comment because I know that around the, the table or around the Zoom, there is a lot of concern about the costs. And I do want to acknowledge that. I guess the point I would make is that we're doing this bylaw for the first time in 2018. In 2013, the Auckland Council passed a bylaw of a similar nature, and regulation does cost money. The point of trying to invest this money in this way is that we work with the operators so that we work towards a compliance model rather than an enforcement model, and that takes education, it takes time. Other councils have seen the value of it, and I think if COVID has taught us anything, it's we shouldn't scrimp when it comes to investment in public health. But yeah, I welcome the debate, and I appreciate there are varying views around Zoom.
Thank you. I'm seconding that paper, but I will hold my right to speak now. In our speaking order, I've got councillor Matthews, councillor Pennington, councillor Young, councillor Paul. So councillor Matthews, I can see Mia Foster as well, councillor Matthews, over to you.
Kia ora kato. If you'll indulge me, I'll share a bit of a personal reflection that after we moved to level two, one of the first things I did was book a couple of appointments. And anybody that knows me knows my hair is an essential, you know, going to the hairdresser is an essential part of my life. So I went booked to the hairdresser but also to go and get a pedicure and at a local nail bar. And I guess what I would say is that there was a very marked difference between the safety procedures from the regulated hairdressing salon to the unregulated nail bar in terms of use of PPE, in terms of adequate physical distancing. It really did show to me that in a sort of a COVID environment, that there is a real need to do something more about this industry. I, last night, several of us attended a Zoom meeting organised by the National Council of Women to talk about what women want for our annual plan. And it was very interesting that, I want to quote Veril, who is a fantastic member, had a lot of wisdom to share, and she was kind of reflecting on, and some of you may have seen in the media, some, you know, critique of our the focus on shovel-ready infrastructure post-COVID, and how, you know, a lot of the projects, government funding and local government, which will go towards the employment of largely male-dominated industries. And it was really interesting because she asked us to apply a bit more critical thinking about how our decisions affect women, and she specifically asked us to do more in the area of public health as a kind of a pressing issue where local government has a strong role. So, I mean, I couldn't imagine a more apt example than this bylaw, given it is has such an impact on the health and safety of a female-dominated largely migrant workforce, and my local salon largely Vietnamese young women, often with not very good English, and also a female-dominated client base. So in terms of the safety of Wellington women, both the workers in these in this industry, but also the customers, I think this is a very important bylaw to support. Thank you.
Thank you. I have councillor Pennington next.
Well, thank you, and thank you councillor Fitzsimons for your leadership on this issue and to follow councillor Matthews, because, look, I did have some concerns about this bylaw. I do think it's a bit crazy for every council to regulate. I really think the government needs to be challenged, not on this issue but every issue. It really doesn't make a difference where you get your nails done in the country about what kind of infection control. I also guess the other question I had was around priority and affordability, given we have got ratepayers under enormous pressure. And, you know, like if we were being brutal about prioritisation, would this be at the top? That, you know, their customers do have a choice about which businesses they patronise or whether they go and do their nails at home or whatever, and there was that. And also, I just always do have a bit of an issue about long-term plan kind of papers that come to us, because there's a whole lot of things that we all might like to put in the LTP, and that just gets a bit tricky when we have papers coming and saying, well, we will put this up. However, it was comrade Young who got me into this, because as soon as you put nail bars and sweatshops into Google, you come up with some very ugly information. Now, I don't want to cast any aspersions on the businesses in Wellington, but nevertheless, we don't want them to become like they have overseas. And then I also had two men on Twitter saying, oh, we've got COVID, it's a disaster, people are starving, and you're talking about nails. And I went, hmm, hmm, okay. So what I, those were my initial thoughts around the concerns. And then what I realised is that this actually is a labour protection issue. The customers can choose to do their nails at home, but people don't have choice necessarily about where they work. And also, that's right, why is women's work or women's protection less than men? And and I do take, there's been a lot of critique around shovel-ready projects, and actually councillor Fitzsimons and I talked about, well, women's refuges are also critical infrastructure. Why don't we have more discussion around that? So I think I'm very comfortable with supporting this, because I do think we need to always protect vulnerable women workers. And I, councillor Fitzsimons, you have that lovely saying, I've never met a regulation I didn't like. Now, I have met lots of regulations that I don't like, because I'm not so fond of big government, but I think that was a very, that that is absolutely appropriate in this case. I would just like if you could respond in your write-up reply about whether you can liaise with the other councils in the region, just to see if we can cut some costs, because you know, doing it 78 times possibly is a little bit excessive. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Young.
Thank you. Well, I was very pleased and proud to second this last year. I think it's a really great initiative. I, you know, I absolutely applaud it, but I cannot support it this year. And that is really because we live in a different time. Our economy has been totally devastated by COVID-19, our ratepayers, our residents, and and of course the councils. So I'm very keen to stop, to stop spending money wherever possible. My priorities have completely changed because we have to make sure Wellington remains affordable. And all these smallest measures, they may be important, they are important in this case, really just add up to higher rates. So my priorities are trying to spend, trying to spend as little ratepayer's money as possible. And as we've all agreed, regulation costs money. Of course, there is the other option of self-regulation, and I have noticed on my very rare occasions the manicures, because I don't have fancy-coloured nails, because they're not practical for my lifestyle. Standards have improved in beauty salons. You know, I notice now ones that used to be a bit scuzzy now have sterilising machines and that kind of thing. So I just would say to people, you know, use your wits and have a look around the place. Does it look clean? Have they got sterilised, do the tools implements come out of sterilised bags? The the migrants immigration thing is another issue. I don't believe it's a very big issue in New Zealand. Most of the ones I've spoken to are usually students who have come down from Vietnam and they're doing it as a second income. But I agree that is an international problem. But I would just say to people, caveat emptor, and for those of you who, unlike me, didn't have three days of Latin before I walked out of the class, that is buyer beware. And, you know, you've got to make, you've got to have your head screwed on. And that includes things like, why on earth would someone have their eyeballs tattooed? They must be out of their minds. So so I would just say, you know, common sense is a big part of this. This is a great thing to do, but this is not the year of nice-to-haves. We've got to focus on our priorities and keep Wellington affordable, and we just can't afford to do this. But just, you know, when you go into a place, have a look around. If it looks scuzzy, if the people, you know, this looks a bit grubby, if there's an animal walking, well, I'd be out of there straight away. So I support the intention of this, but I can't support it today.
I'm going to speak to this now. I just want to follow on from there and say, it's very easy to put it on to the customers to make those decisions, but none of us as customers are experts in what actually effective hygiene is, and that is my big concern. And also aware that we have 15, 16-year-old girls who will be going to these places, and they won't have adults going with them saying, oh, that place isn't actually using the right, the right products to sterilise their things with. People can make it look like it's being sterilised, but it's not effectively being done. So I actually don't agree with that statement at all. And I really, when we talk about customers having choice, customers only have choice of what they see at a surface level. So I have to say, as a 15-year-old, I went and lay on sunbeds. And as an adult now, I wish I had never done that, but I didn't have anyone or any information around what issues were. And I can see now that my skin is changing as a result of that. And I wish that there had been regulations that made it very clear as to what those those issues could be, because as a young person, you don't have the ability to look forward and know what those issues are unless people tell you. But I believe that this is actually something we really need to take seriously, because the impacts on communities and and people who who are trying to do the right thing and and, you know, and this should be a service that people, there should be services that people can access, don't have any way of knowing how to keep themselves safe. In fact, I would actually say that many of our residents actually think that a lot of these places will have regulations around them, the assumption, because you can make it look like you are regulated, because you can say that you belong to something, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you have safety measures in place that are checked on by an external party, i.e. council. And so I think it's really important that we do take this seriously. It's really easy to say the government should deal with this, and yes, to a certain extent, I agree with that, because obviously they have the power of of the collective. But the reality is many other councils are doing this now, and actually, when you hear the list of it, there are councils of quite small areas, some of them, and actually, if they can do it, we should definitely be able to do it. We should be able to keep Wellingtonians safe. And I think that it's very easy to kick the can down the road and say someone else should do it. We hear that with housing, the government should solve that. But actually, we would be the ones that would be having to to keep this bylaw, to make sure that whatever was put in place, we would be the ones that would be checking on that. So I think I think it's really important that that we do take this this opportunity. Actually, if anything like councillor Fitzsimons said, COVID-19 shows us how important it is to look after people's health. And actually, these businesses will benefit from that, because how many of them? I read an article that councillor Pennington shared last night about some of the horror stories around infections and fungal infections and awful things. And many of those businesses, those people feel awful when they cause a serious injury to someone or an infection, and then they end up having to refund and pay for doctors' bills. It's actually not good for business. You know, they actually, these places would would benefit and appreciate having a way to be able to share with the community that they have safe practices, that they don't have to go and refund people their their appointment costs and pay for their doctors' visits. So I actually think this is about efficiency, and it's about supporting businesses, and it's about looking after our residents, because as I said, not every resident is going to have the ability to know what is safe and what isn't safe. So I absolutely applaud councillor Fitzsimons for pushing this forward. And I do have to say, councillor Young, I'm not really sure that enough has changed from last year around these issues, that we can just put our head in the sand and say, costs too much, people are just going to have to keep dealing with these issues in an ongoing way. I think it's really important that we deal with it now and that we we take our responsibility seriously. And so the next person on the speaking order is councillor Paul.
Well, kia ora kato, this one's obviously very interesting to me as a person with nails and tattoos, part of my standard look. But I think there's some awesome points being brought up here through this paper and through councillor Fitzsimons' advocacy on the issue. I mean, I never really, I don't think I really cared about it until I thought about what councillor Pennington was saying about the exploitation of workers, women, migrant workers that really, you know, we can't, we can't let them be in unsafe environments. So I really do encourage this. I think the thing that stood out to me, obviously, in this paper was the tāmoko provisions within it, because I was really concerned initially that we would try and regulate a cultural practice that we really have no understanding of as a council. And obviously, I've got tāmoko very upfront, and I've been to to a lot of people receiving their tāmoko, whether it's amukukouai or other tāmoko, and it is a very intimate experience that I'd hate to see regulated. So I'm so happy with this paper in terms of how it's culturally kind of placed. But I guess all I would, all I would like, I guess, in the write-up reply is just an assurance that we're going to protect that tāunga of tāmoko, because the the only thing that I'm a little bit afraid of is that we have a whole bunch of non-Māori artists trying to do tāmoko in order to be exempt from this regulation. So and there's been a lot of nasty appropriation of Māori art recently. This one has been very popular lately, and this artist has had to close her gallery in Nelson because of the the kind of backlash that she's received for appropriating that. So I just want to make sure that our tāunga is kept safe and not misappropriated to save some money in regulation. So yeah, but big thank you to the officers and big thank you to councillor Fitzsimons for her advocacy on this. Mai, kia ora.
Mia Foster.
Thank you. Thanks, Jill. I'm also going to start by saying thanks to councillor Fitzsimons for all the work and obviously a lot of research that she's put into this. But I'm going to have great difficulty in supporting it, and it is around, A, the finances, and B, what is our job and what are our priorities? So, look, I accept there is an issue, it's not an issue I'm particularly familiar with personally, but the question to me is, how big is the issue? And the next question is, whose issue is it? So councillor Fitzsimons made the point that local local government New Zealand had a remit, but that remit was last year, and the paper says that the local government New Zealand has not yet even had a conversation with the minister about that. And yes, I accept that the ministry has also said that this is unlikely to be something government would regulate for for some time, which tells you that the government doesn't see this as a significant issue or an issue which is worth them putting on the priority list and bringing it up the priority list. So they're saying it's not a particularly significant issue, and that's from both the health point of view and from the labour regulations point of view. The other point to me is, is this the right process and the right time? Now, I know in talking to councillor Fitzsimons, she said that this should have been in the draft annual plan, but it's not. And the problem is, we then have something which is now being suggested to go into the our final annual plan deliberations. We're already starting at 5.1%, which for many people is already too high. I know that next year looks horrific, and we know that the core things we have to fund around, particularly around the waters area, we know we've we've had the big debate about the library, all of these things are going to flow through to our ratepayers, and we know that there are many of our ratepayers who are under significant pressure, particularly at this time. So my question really is, is this so urgent that the government doesn't, A, the government doesn't think it's urgent, but is this so urgent that we have to do it now, having not put it through the consultation process as part of our annual plan, and we have to take it out of sequence as a level of service change with our long-term plan? And we also don't have the way in which we would fund it in this in this mix. And so usually with health services, we fund something like 60% of them through user charges. And I would suggest to you that that should be accompanying this, which is the sort of thing that we do through our long-term plan, not separately, especially as a as a late piece in a an annual plan. The other thing around our current rates increase is that all the pressure, even for the 5.1, is on the upside. Now, when we went out with our annual plan, our draft annual plan, you know, I was asked, can we put in something about how hard we've all worked to put the to get the budget down? The reality is, we as an elected body haven't. We've actually generally contributed to increasing the cost of the cost to our ratepayers. And this, to me, will be doing more of that. Councillor Fitzsimons in introducing it said that the bulk of the population is covered by this. Now, I can't remember what the list, I think it was Saito Timorua, I heard Sidney Hurd Auckland. Now, Auckland, of course, is so huge, but it's 12 councils out of the whole country. I know Auckland is the biggest by country mile, but that means that the majority of councils don't regulate in this area. And so I think that the logic which we started off with, which is, the more the more councils do this, the less likely government is to regulate, and which means that the other councils have got to go and do it. So in a sense, what we are doing, if we if we go down this path as well, we're putting more pressure on, you know, the other councils, the upper huts, the Christchurches, the Dunedens, I think weren't in that list, to do their own thing, rather than central government doing it itself. Who pays? So the paper says that this is a $70 million business. Now, if if that's the case, the $200,000 odd dollars that we could pay the lot with a 0.3% levy on any given piece of beauty treatment, or any piece of beauty treatment work. So if you were going to have a $100 piece of work, we could charge 30 cents. And that would cover the cost, rather than our ratepayers having to pay for it. That's my, that's a fundamental concern to me. And councillor Pennington did talk about being brutal about prioritisation. My question to you all is, where would this fit against the other things that we do in terms of our priorities? And I would suggest to you that it might be in different places, but it's probably not enormously high, given that we've never done it before, and it's not enormously high to be done in this year as opposed to being thought about in the LTP next year. And the final thing I wanted to mention was about risk, and it's the question of how far this this ends up going. So if something goes wrong, are we going to be in the gun for not regular? So if something goes wrong, are we going to be in the gun for not regulating properly? Now, we might not be financially at risk, we might well be reputationally at risk. And we know what's happened. We're certainly seen in the building consent area where it has been utter nightmare for councils. And that's cost us tens of millions of dollars. In fact, the total is around a hundred and fifty million dollars paid out or to be paid out. That's the kind of liability in that particular industry. I'm not suggesting that's the case here, but there is liability that sometimes sticks with councils. And then the thought that we are going to be a labour market regulator? That's got to be government's job, surely. That's what WorkSafe's all about. Why are we, why do we want to step into that market? Because that, well, councillor Fitzsimons, I see you're shaking your head, but other people went to that space, so.
No one said that, that we're doing it.
Well, people were talking about labour market conditions and this being, this being a tool to try and sort out labour market conditions. So if it's our bylaw, while we might not be doing it, what's the point in talking about labour market conditions? It was our bylaw and we're seeing that as part of a partial solution to it. I'm scratching my head about that one. So look, I I understand, I understand the intent of it. It's well-intentioned. But I struggle to support it, particularly in the process we're going through and the timing that we're going through it and given all the other pressures on us and on our ratepayers.
Thank you. Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. And look, I know when this was, and we came before us in two thousand and eighteen, I was very supportive. It seemed the right thing to do. But like a couple of my colleagues, um it's a different situation in two thousand and twenty. We are in the midst of COVID nineteen, in the midst of the biggest probably economic crisis that we will face over the last, over the past hundred years. So um, you know, and and I, you know, it might seem only two hundred and fifty K. What does that mean? It's, you know, why not kick off the work? We keep adding these extra bits to our budgets, so they all add up. And I I I look at our draft annual plan, that started, you know, at four point nine five percent for ratepayers increase. It went to five point one. And why did it go to five point one? Because, oh, look, we added in a hundred and fifty K for a um home energy audits to increase that budget. We added in um a hundred K into the Build Heritage Fund. We added in um an additional two hundred K to um funds and expanded weed management program. You know, that total four hundred and fifty. So you add that four hundred and fifty that we've added to the rates bill for this coming year, another two hundred and fifty. We um innovating streets that majority um voted for. You, we're going to, that's going to impact our revenue by one or two million dollars. That's all going to go added on to the rates bill. And for those of you don't know, the average rates bill we've gone out with five point one, it's actually for residential ratepayers, that's looking like over six percent already without this. So, look, it comes back to where our priorities are and prioritizing our work programme, uh which we haven't done, which is why we keep doing these piecemeal decisions without a proper framework to work with it. You know, I really think, you know, it's a bit like e-scooters. We, all councils ended up um trying to put in some sort of bylaws around the use of e-scooters because NZTA never came to the party and did their bit right up front that they should have done. And this, in terms of these um issues with nail bars, et cetera, it's a Ministry of Health. I haven't seen Ashley Bloomfield mention, this was a really important thing, under COVID nineteen, and every single daily um new um stand-up he did. So, you know, it is obviously not um ministries of health priority at the moment. We know that. You know, um we know officers followed up and and um and it has not gained traction as a priority for um legislation. Well, that's fine. They don't need to provide the legislation, but they could at least provide some guidelines for all councils, which they haven't done. Hut Council um uh sort of not sure they're going to adopt their final bylaw will will depend on their current priorities. Auckland, the same. Whether this review proceeds this year will depend as they, as they're in the process of prioritizing their work. We really need to start prioritizing our work and what is really important in this economic crisis, which many of us probably haven't felt around this table. We're sitting in our warm offices, um we're still getting our regular income, less ten percent. And so I don't think we really understand the impact that this is going to do. We're probably going to have triple um unemployment um figures. Um and people won't have, they won't even have the discretionary spend to go and get their nails done. They'll, you know, so we we may well see a number of those businesses folding. Um and um and yes, there were some comments about, you know, protecting the workers there. That is um the role of WorkSafe. It is the role of MB to do that, ask, to make sure that that, and they should be doing that now, not not subject to whatever bylaw that we may have. So look, um this is, I don't see this as a a priority project for our council at the moment. We need to be getting on and developing up our pandemic response plan, which certainly needs to be fleshed out a lot more than what we've got. And we certainly need to be prioritizing our work programme and not waiting for the long-term plan to be able to do that. We need to be quite clear what we want to do for the next six months. And I'm not seeing this and um and certainly we do this. You can just see the newspapers, can't you? You know, council prioritizes this over a response plan. So um I can't support this at this point in time, but I, you know, it probably had, it'll have merits in another um couple of years.
I'm not sure that anyone's saying it's been prioritized over something else. That might be a little bit of an exaggeration of what's been said prior. Um councillor Conde.
Kia ora tato. Um I I kind of totoko a lot of what I've heard. I I really appreciated councillor Matthews comments around around that this is really a women's health issue and and I Mayor Foster, you said, whose issue is it? And in that, in that context, you were trying to say it was the central government's issue and they're not prioritizing it. And so therefore, if they're not prioritizing it, it can't be important. But we actually know that women's health issues, health issues that primarily affect women simply don't get prioritized. Let's talk about moreana funding. Let's talk about endometriosis funding. Um you know, I had obstetric colostasis when I was pregnant, which meant both of my babies could have been stillborn in the womb. There's almost no research funding on that because it affects women. So fundamentally, this is a women's health issue. And I don't think that we can, we can argue that just because it's not being prioritized in other places automatically means it's not important. I completely agree with with concerns that councillors are saying around this notion of of our cost savings and the press costs pressures that we're under and whether this is a an important priority. And um so I'm feeling torn in both directions on this issue. And this is how I've managed to to reconcile that for myself, which is that I've decided I'm going to support the vote today on, because I think it is an important public health issue. Um and and it, the paper is is um setting out a a good approach to that. But it doesn't mean that I will necessarily support it when we get to the annual plan debate. And I actually think at the annual plan debate is the point where we should be having these conversations about what are our key priorities. Councillor Calvert, you mentioned a number of things that had been included in the annual plan. Well, I might actually prioritize this over some of those things when it comes down to it. So I feel like this paper um was initially was intended to be part of the annual plan. I would like to see it at the annual plan debate so that we can compare it against our other priorities at that point. At by by taking, by voting against it now, we're saying we can't even talk about it at that point. We can't even have it, have that conversation about what our priorities are. So so that's where I've I've landed on this issue is I will be supporting the paper today. And then it will sit, this this spending item will sit on its merits against all the other items of spending that we are going to be looking at when we come to the annual plan debate. And I may or may not support it at that point. So that's, that's how I've I've come to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillor Frey, Deputy Mayor Frey.
Yeah, thanks. Look, I too have really struggled with this because I think there is an issue there. What I, what I failed to understand completely is how big the issue actually is. Um I do know from personal experience when pedicures, when you were in New Zealand, I did get a fungal infection. But that was twenty years ago and I've since had my nails done many times without any problems. But I don't like to say there's zero risk, um because, you know, that that there probably is an issue. But again, I come back to, why would we really be trying to solve this issue by sixty seven councils doing their own thing? And that makes me reluctant actually to go down this path right now, especially when we have a very busy work programme and a lot of projects that are going to need quite close monitoring and attention from our staff. I'm not sure this is the time to embark on a a a new um stream of work. And I also think if we were going to do that, we'd need to be really properly resourced or we would run the risk of actually doing more harm than good. So I don't reluctantly think I cannot actually support this at this time. I would be interested to see if it comes back to us perhaps for the LTP, if it doesn't pass now, when we can perhaps have time to look at what other councils are doing and actually formulate a plan to to link up with other councils, to to speak with a stronger voice through local government New Zealand and make approaches to the government so that we get a framework that we can regulate within. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Foy.
Kia ora tato. And once again, I'd like to thank everybody for this very healthy debate. The thing I'd like to talk about today are the way Wellington City Council addresses its fees and charges. And I think that we have to get real with the way that we are charging our services. And so even now, when I look at these costs for a business, that the businesses really need to be paying more to support the service that we provide. So I think that we could find a long-term agreement for the the service to pay for itself through the fees and charges. And in fact, we should be doing that if we're serious about it, even if it's over a long period of time. And that is all I have to say on this. And actually, we'd be employing someone ourselves to get this done. And we'd be enabling businesses to do, provide a very good professional service. So in that regard, I would make the claim that we really need to make it pay for itself and go ahead. Thank you.
Councillor O'Neill.
Kia ora councillors. Um just briefly wanted to talk in support of this paper and to um flag uh what a fantastic job our officers have done and and engaging with different groups around this as well. Officers came to speak to the Pacifica Advisory Group um here at council and yeah, um seemed to be quite broad consensus around um wanting greater regulation and greater transparency around uh different practices in Wellington and in the Wellington region that uh involve communities as they go along with them. There was, I I've just got a report in front of me um around the uh Pacifica and Saman people specifically relating to tattoo festivals or tattoo festivals in New Zealand around um the ways that we can engage with different practices, but also promote the health and safety and and take along those cultural traditions as well. And uh and then lastly, just to end on the Pacifica Advisory Group felt that um a large part of this this work should be around education and support and partnerships with these communities as well. And also shared the concern um that councillor Paul raised around uh predominantly uh sometimes parkia regulations on stuff we don't understand. And I think that's a really important point um to raise as well. And I look forward to councillor Fitzsimons uh write a reply on that. Thank you.
Um I'm just gonna, I forgot to add something before when I um spoke. I just wanted to say, um and I wanted to acknowledge the work that officers have done, particularly with regards to Tatarasio Waitangi and following on from my colleagues. And the way it's been reported in the paper um around having the Tōhunga Suppression Act mentioned in this paper. When we have been talking in the past about things that have been missing in our papers, this is what we need to see. This is this um perspective in in part of our history, which is hugely misunderstood and just not known about by our community, being reflected through our papers. So thank you so much to the staff for your really in-depth um research and and really thinking about how to do this well. And I agree with councillor Paul and O'Neill around, you know, making sure that we are opening up this, any conversation we have to another perspective, which is our indigenous perspective. And I think this paper does it really well. So I'm really looking forward to seeing how those conversations go and how we empower um our Māori community to um to be involved and to show leadership here. The next person in um is councillor Rush and then we'll basically rush a reply.
Well, thank you all for that um very um broad debate. And I too have seesawed, on the one hand, protecting women, my wife, my daughter, of course, my many, many colleagues. But also preserving a bit of self-responsibility and individual choice in in which bar nail bar uh e-etcetera that you go to. And I suppose I did start going through the paper as we've been talking and looking for the the women's health issue. I mean, I know, for example, that a lot of tattooists are actually men, a lot of men get tattoos. And to the, not surprisingly, I didn't see uh much in here that this is a woman's issue. It really is a broad issue. It's nor, nor is it a labour issue. This is not a paper that's been brought in order to protect workers and quite rightly so. I do think that WorkSafe New Zealand have got a role here. They have got legislative powers and they should be doing their job. One, I I do acknowledge uh the point made about endometriosis. My former partner had endometriosis and I know very, very well around those very, it's a very, very difficult and and not mentioned. You know, uh um problem for some women, but it's not for this council to be solving. But I thought, I thought I'd share that empathy with you. I guess um the mayor mentioned um, you know, uh our role as a consenting authority. And and we are getting criticism for consenting cross-connections. Um and and of course, being another regulating regulatory role does open us up to similar sorts of criticisms. And I also acknowledge the problem is, how big is this? I did go through the paper um looking for complaints from people who may have been sharing things on Twitter and I I just didn't see it. I saw the ACC feedback, didn't really say that there was a big problem here that needs solving. Um and I guess in the end, we talk about tāmoko, um Pacifica also have a cultural tradition of tattooing and so, but they seem to be excluded from the, uh shall we say, the exception that our indigenous friends enjoy. Ultimately, I think councillor Young uh hit the nail on the head when I initially looked at this. And normally, when I'm in two minds, I go with my gut instinct and I think to myself, why are we doing this now? I think it's very worthwhile, but I do think that we've got big fish to fry. I am concerned that the rates that I um personally went out to residents around me and got a message back saying, keep it between four and five. It's already gone to five point one. This will kick it up into something more. We know that those car parks that some people want to remove are going to add another uh half or third to a half percent as well. And uh and I'm, I am starting to wonder, councillor Conde talked about the annual plan and and wanting to preserve choice and and I certainly celebrate that. But in the end, the annual plan's gone out for consultation. I'm trying to understand what sort of process do we have where we go out for consultation with an annual plan, we've debated and agreed, asking for public feedback, only to find that we're going to add some other things in. So I I really struggle with that. I do acknowledge councillor Fitzsimons' work in this paper and and that of the uh officers. But I think it's just the timing's not quite right. And and I think there's also some, um I I think what the service types that are to be covered and how they're going to be covered really needs to be specified. And paragraph four of the uh of the paper does talk about that as needing further consideration. So, you know, how will a a barber who provides some sort of these services are going to fit in with this? And and should barbers be covered? If I can share a quick story, um when the election campaign started off, I hear a quick was sitting in Kentucky Fried Chicken, having something to eat, and a guy had just turned up from the Waikato, said, would you like to have a haircut? I needed one. I was pressed for time. Well, Mono did a great job, but he left a whole bunch of stuff sticking at the back here. Fortunately, it didn't matter. But anyway, I mean, a bit of regulation, it wouldn't hurt. Ultimately, I'm concerned about costs. I'm concerned about added regulation. I, I think that uh the intent is good, but at this stage I won't be supporting.
Uh councillor O'Neill, I see you've put your hand up again. Oh, you, that was, didn't mean to. Uh councillor Fitzsimons, your right of reply.
Well, uh just want to start by thanking everyone for the very considered uh contributions. I guess just um in terms of a right of reply, uh I'll just respond to councillor Pennett's uh comment that I've never seen in regulation I didn't like, which is close but not entirely true. But I guess the point I'm trying to make through that is that a voluntary compliance regime or a hands-off approach doesn't work. We can see that with Pike River, we can see that with Leiki Homes, and I think we can see that with a number of the public health problems we have across the world. And I guess um I just want to now go through some of the points that have been raised, some, some particularly uh have people have asked me to particularly respond to. Uh councillor Pennett, you raised an issue around um working with other councils to uh to cut the costs. And I can absolutely guarantee to you that that um has hap, has happened and will continue to happen. And we know that we do have a lot to learn from uh both HUT and Auckland, but also other, other councils around the country. Um, some people said, I think it was councillor Young, you raised an issue around um. Some places are putting sterilized, are sterilized implements, that they've got them in bags. But actually, what the regional public health report showed that even those that are doing it, only 20% of them are doing it properly. So even where it's happening, it's not actually happening to a degree that is gen- genuinely sterile. Um, the mayor raised a number of issues. I, I want to take a particular issue with some of his comments around um that the government doesn't see this as a significant issue. I think that is completely not true. The Ministry of Health has engaged extensively with us and with other councils on that. What I think we're seeing, and we got it through uh Dr Nisdale's email, is that the more that the councils are regulating. The less case there is for government to do so. And we might not like that, we might prefer that they do it, but unfortunately, it's the reality that we're facing. Uh, the mayor also raised an issue around this should have been in the draft annual plan. Look, I totally agree. It's an unfortunate mistake that it wasn't. Um, the chief executive has made it clear that it, we are perfectly entitled to do that, uh given that it's not uh as significant a cost as otherwise might have been. Um, but look, that, that's a mistake, needs to happen and we will, as councillor Conde pointed out, have a chance to debate that at the annual plan uh workshops. Um, I also just wanted to uh respond to councillor Phone and the mayor's comments around um. Can we set up a system of, of basically user pays regulation? And I think um what, what in terms of the um passing it on to the consumers and, and those operators paying, I think we probably can eventually. But the reason why we need to invest now at this stage is really to establish the expertise within the council. But also to work with those operators to get them up to a standard where they can comply. So really, that's, that, that's the importance of, of this investment now. The mayor, you, you also raised issues around um building consents and the lack of regulation there and that this has led to a large liability for the council. And you were worried that that might happen in this instance. I'd actually say that more likely the opposite is likely to be true, that if we don't choose to regulate, we're actually letting public health risks of infection, disease. Um, bloodborne viruses go unchecked. So, and from my perspective, the opposite is true, we must regulate. And I also want to um take issue with your comment around people suggesting that this would be some sort of labour market regulation. I didn't hear any councillor say that, but what we do know is that when you introduce regulation to an industry. It also exposes poor labour practices. It means that our inspectors, as our officer told us on Tuesday, will go into these establishments, they will inspect them. And if they are seeing labour conditions that they are concerned about, they will contact the labour inspectorate. Now, we know that regulation is more likely to lead to workers' rights being upheld. It is clear across the world that this is the case. Um, and this may well be, our inspectors going into these operators may well be the first time that anyone has inspected these places at all. And been able to raise the, these concerns. And I know from experience that the labour inspectorate will take very seriously if it comes from another inspector. Um, people raised issues around priorities and the need to prioritize our work program. And that we're dealing with the biggest economic crisis. I think councillor Calvert, you raised the point that we're dealing with the biggest economic crisis uh in a generation. Well, that actually is because of the public health crisis. So I think now's not the time to cut costs and, and not look for, not look to regulate uh public health. And I also want to remind um councillors that pandemic plan included, they, and the initial, the initial pandemic plan. Included uh a suggestion that this council would forgive up to $10 million of parking revenue by introducing free parking. We overturned that and now we're only asking for a, you know, a little less than quarter of a million. So in terms of, you know, the overall costs, I actually think that, you know, that revenue that has been gained by charging for parking from, from, from um. For this period and this financial year has to be put into perspective with this kind of uh, this kind of cost. And Deputy Mayor Free, I just wanted to remind you of a quote that you said in the earlier paper around Omororo, where you said you can't talk about an economic case of public health. And I think that applies here just as it applied there. Um, and finally, councillor Rush, I think um it is, it is a woman's health issue. And I think you've heard that from the woman around the table and, and I'm sure the woman in your life um would be able to give you some, uh some comment on that, as you said. And also raised a point around how regulation will work, how will it operate in practice? And there still needs to be uh more work done on that. And I absolutely accept that, that's the case. We're not writing the bylaw now. We do have the Auckland bylaw, it is comprehensive, they've had it in place since 2013. We can learn the lessons from them um and make sure that we, we develop a bylaw that is uh both useful and enforceable. And so thank you, everyone, and I'd really appreciate your support.
Thank you very much, everybody. And so now that we've got this motion that has been debated and moved and seconded, um it's time to vote. So please vote accordingly.
Just waiting on Deputy Mayor Free. And that's eight votes for, seven against.
So that has been carried. Thank you very much. And we will now move on to the next paper, which is item 3.1, the proposed easement for Transpower access to national grid over Caribbean. Avenue Reserve and Horekiwi, Horekiwi Road. So um I'd like to invite councillor O'Neill to um introduce this report.
Happy to introduce um this paper. This paper is around um allowing an easement in the Granada North and, and the southern part of Tawa. A piece of um land that will allow uh um just pretty standard some, some extra um access to, to maintenance around some planned electricity. Updating in that area. Um, there's um a cost covered in the paper that talks about um some new extensive planting that's going to be uncovered. So uh that extra bit of track will be funded by the people that are leasing the land, it's not council. And that will allow more nature bush and more attention to be paid to the area. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Um, Mia Foster.
Uh, did you have a second there? Because otherwise I'm happy to second it.
It's a very good question. Thank you, Mia Foster. You've got that one sorted.
Yeah, okay. So look, happy to second this. I just, the only thing I was going to say, um, we do, we do quite a lot of these kind of things where we have utilities um going across our reserve land. And we always try and seek to make sure that we uh manage, mitigate, avoid uh any of the adverse impacts of those um, uh those utilities on our reserve land. Just the one thing I did want to say though is that originally we got this land from Transpower. So we did a deal back, um I'm gonna say probably in the 10 years or so ago, uh might be slightly more, actually pretty slightly more than that. Uh, to acquire this land at a, I, I think a pretty reasonable price. I can, I can remember a big sub, sub 100K for the 88 odd hectares. Uh, and um, and part of that was about the reorienting of the, of the Transpower uh lines through, uh through this land. So uh, and that, of, of course, what it does, it provides a very good, fairly challenging connection uh between um, uh between Granada North. And uh, and into the Belmont Regional Park. And if you want to, you can go between Patoni and uh, and Takaaboo stations. And that, that makes quite a good day walk, which I know is quite popular with many people. So a very useful addition to our reserve network.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No. Uh, sorry, I mentioned you don't need a right of reply councillor O'Neill, because there hasn't been any debate to that. Okay, so now that we have um, the motion has been moved and seconded, um I'd like to um open voting now.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. All right. And so now we're going to move on to the quarter three performance report for 2019 and 2020 and item 3.4. And I'd like to invite Deputy Mayor Free to introduce the report.
Thank you very much. Um, this is an over 80-page document, which just goes to show how much there was to report on. Um, our council's certainly very busy. Um, it covers the period from start of January to the end of March. Um, and of course, we had our first COVID case in New Zealand at the very end of January. Um, with a more and more realization of what was going to take place, the impacts of it. And we turned to level four lockdown on 25th of March. So there's definitely been um some impact of COVID uh present in the, in the numbers that feature in the report. Um, but of course, it's going to be even more in quarter four. So we're only seeing the tip of the iceberg in terms of the impact of COVID in this report. Um, the OpEx spending, um, there was a small surplus. But we are forecasting a deficit to the end of the year of 21 million. So that probably needs to be kept in mind. So the impacts of COVID in the next quarter will be quite substantial. Uh, and of course, the other thing that showed up was a big underspending CapEx. We always seem to have an underspending CapEx. Um, there was under spend of 32 million to date, but that's going to become quite substantial by the next end of next quarter of 55 million. So in a, um, there, there's far too much to go through the whole report. I'm sure you've all read it. It does report on our seven activity areas, um of which it's pleasing to note 66% of our targets were still met. Um, I think that's quite good. It is a little bit down on our first two quarters, but still pretty good. Um, but it is notable that we're not reporting on the water KPIs in this report. So that probably makes it, the performance look a little better than it might otherwise do, because the water has been quite problematic. As a generalization, the OpEx was on track or underspent, except in the environment area where it was overspent and that was the poo trucks. Shaun, of course, knows about that. Um, I think it's worth noting that we had a big focus on our pandemic response. Um, that comes through in the report. I think the city responded really compassionately. As a, as a council, we did what we could for the people on the streets, making sure our residents were well cared for. Um, trying to provide, provide um some reductions in fees and charges to make sure people could still do things in the city, if they were able to. Um, so that was uh one aspect in the report. Another aspect is actually that stood out for me is the, the large number of really big projects that we're engaged in. Huge numbers of projects. Um, and this gives me a little bit, it's probably, it wasn't really the economic um aspects that led me to oppose the um bylaw. Um, it was more that we are so busy that I wasn't quite sure this is the right time to embark on a really significant piece of, what should be a really significant piece of work. So we've got um huge numbers of projects, probably more than a dozen. And they're all mentioned and they all have their kind of risk profiles there. I think that's something we really need to keep a very close eye on. Um, they range from our roading projects through to our convention exhibition center, to Omororo, to other water projects. So let's get Wally moving, um into the library at Teneka Civic Square. There really are a huge amount that we have been involved in. And, and another feature of the report is that we also had to respond to some major failures. Um, the sludge, um the pipe through Mount Albert, um other water failures. Um, you know, and uh, and again, we managed, with the work of our partners, we've managed to respond to those and mostly now they are fixed. So in summary, this report is a very comprehensive um uh report. And of the work that's being done by our council and our financial position. I think it's a really necessary thing for us to take um a full, enough time to actually read this really thoroughly. As part of our monitoring and compliance obligations as governors and. I'm happy with it myself. It's been very interesting. I've, I've got a few questions, but I think it's a good summary, a fair summary. And I'm happy to recommend it to you for your approval.
Thank you. Just to confirm that um the civic square is Tengako.
Tengako. Sorry, did I say it wrong?
You said Teneko, which I can't see how you did that because of the palms on the library. So just, I thought I should confirm that for people of the listeners.
Thank you, thank you. Tengako. Okay. Um, I'm not sure who's seconding it, to be honest.
Who would like to second this? Um, Mia Foster, can you second this? Would you like to speak to this now? Right, uh councillor Calvert, we did have quite a big um question and answer session on this on Tuesday. So I'm not expecting that there'll be a huge amount of debate to this. I'm councillor Calvert.
Yeah, look, I just, it's probably more of a que, it's a question I really have is, I, there was quite a, a quite a few questions and answers provided from Tuesday. And I'm just wondering how that's going to be factored into the final report. Because we're, we're acknowledging that this is the report, but not knowing, noting that there are any editorial changes. Because I believe that some of the information that we were provided needs to be factored into this report.
I can maybe answer that, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, yes councillor Calvert, we are taking into account any changes that need to be made. I think you've suggested one's been suggested to you. Uh, and uh, as we finish collating all those questions, we are looking across the report and, and seeing if we need to make any, any specific modifications relating to the questions. Any questions that we haven't been able to answer um up until now are in progress and we'll get to them as um, we'll get them to you as uh, as, as soon as we possibly can. I think many of them have already been answered, but there may be a few, few outstanding. Just be aware, we are responding to those.
Okay, um, thank you.
Is there any further debate? No, I, I don't know if you need to go right of reply, the Deputy Mayor Free. I think we can probably just go straight to the votes on this one. So voting is open. Uh, just while we are doing the voting on this one, I'll just say that um I've, uh, it's been recorded as a division for the last paper that we debated, because it was a close um vote. Um, I requested that that was recorded as a division.
And this vote is unanimous.
Thank you. I declare that one carried. All right. So we're going to move on to our final um paper, which is item. Four, uh 4.1 on our um agenda. And because on Tuesday we ran out of time to ask any questions on this paper. I'm just going to allow some time now before councillor Calvert introduces it, if there are any questions of this paper. Entirely possible that there aren't, because councillors don't have time to follow anything up. Um, so I can't see anyone indicating that. Oh, councillor Phone, did you have a question?
Is this in P A? No.
No.
No, okay, sorry.
Um, councillor Phone, so this is questions for the officers just around the paper. Still muted.
Yeah, and, and I'm not prepared with my question either. Um, but it was about the, the daily wellbeing check tool. Just what, what were the outcomes of that for council? In terms of what were we able to take from that and was it um well-received, useful?
Who's going to answer that question?
We, we, yeah, we don't have Meredith in the room at the moment. Oh, here she is, here she is. Laurie, you may have to, you may have to repeat that question.
Perfect timing, Meredith. Sorry. Councillor Phone.
Um, I was interested, Meredith, in the heart process, you know, the survey that we put out to the team. Um, and I want to congratulate us on that and I saw it come through in Barbara's reports. But I guess just, just uh, you know, now that we're more down the track, what is the synopsis on that? Are you happy with the result? Do you think that it impacted on the council team, um feeling supported? Like, just what was your, your general takeout and how might we utilize that system or keep that included in our normal business as usual?
Now, talk it, now kitty.
Yes.
Exactly. Um, yeah, it's just, it's just one of many of the wellbeing tools that we did put in place. Um, and we don't report on that because that, that's one between a manager and their employee. And obviously, um, it was a very quick way to be able to say, today I'm not doing so great, or actually, I'm, I'm doing much better today. And we um added the additional heart to make sure that we were able to um recognize if people were in danger. Um, because we knew that domestic violence um would increase during that time based on the national statistics. Um, and experiences in other countries. So um that toll is, is one aside. But what we have done, that we can report on, is the um regular check-ins through um surveys, organizational surveys. So instead of doing the big annual survey, we've started implementing um, you know, temperature checks across the organization about how you're doing in Level Two. What, what, what do you need from us to make sure that you're supported? What, what, what do you need from us to make sure that you're supported? And what are you thinking about going forward? Or have you got enough of the right tools to work from home? Or are you missing being in the workplace? So we've already got all that going on a regular basis, and we're reporting back to both ELT, and we talked about it at FAMs as well. Is that enough? Was that what you're looking for?
Yeah, no, I, I think just also after speaking with the CCOs yesterday, it was quite impressive on how, yeah, everyone had been working with their team's wellbeing. But just, yeah, if that information was shared with our CCOs, no, not the information, but the process. Yeah, just that we're working together on those things.
Yeah, absolutely. Not only did we share it with CCOs, we also shared it with other councils. And it became part of the Kiti of Solgun. So they used our resources. And, and we've, we've freely shared them, because, you know, that we put a lot of work to getting them right, and we didn't want other councils to have to go through the same amount of work to get them right. And but just to be able to give you some confidence, when our staff did report back in, in our first temperature check survey, I think it was about 80 something percent said they felt very supported and that their wellbeing had been well looked after by both the organisation and their managers.
Having an emotional rush. Thank you very much, Meredith.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at the moment? So we have councillor Calvert, councillor O'Neill, and councillor Conde.
Look, just a quick question, Meredith, from me. Bear in mind that this report only comes every three months. As it looks like we may well be approaching COVID level one next week, how are this, how are officers or staff feeling about coming back into the workplace?
They have high confidence in the health and safety measures that we've put in place and the protocols to keep people safe, based on social distancing and cleanliness, et cetera. There is, there is also a large amount of staff who have enjoyed the ability to work from home and feel that they are particularly more productive. And so we're beginning just to look at, well, what, what kind of mixed model could we potentially look at to support a more flexible working arrangement? But that's still far down the line in regards to our conversations.
Or we could tie that into a car free day as well.
We could.
Thank you. Question from councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, Meredith. I was just wondering, as sort of a follow-up question to councillor Phone, if these fantastic provisions that we've given to staff extend to contractors or people in the city council building community, people who might sometimes be in the office but not necessarily like full-time employed or contracted.
And the, the wellbeing resources were not shared with the contractors, because they're not our employees. But obviously, we still have our duty of care as part of the health and safety at WorkAid. But we did keep close contact with our contractors through that time, particularly as we came back into level two and made sure that all the health and safety provisions were in place to keep them safe as well. But less about the wellbeing, I expect some tools, more about the day-to-day operational health and safety.
Thank you. Councillor Conde.
Kia ora, Meredith. I just had a question about working extended hours. So how is that going? That's obviously a big issue. Our staff have had to work really hard during the crisis, and we're all working really hard now catching up on business that got put off during the crisis. How are we going on, on staff working extending out, extended hours? Do we feel like we're getting on top of that?
Councillor Conde, it is true that the organisation went through a particularly intensive period in preparation for lockdown, and, and actually throughout that time. It was much more intensive for some parts of the organisation than for others. And so in putting in place these wellbeing measures, we were making sure that there were conversations between leaders and their staff around taking appropriate time out and breaks to recover. And also for ourselves, all of us sitting around this table role modelling that behaviour, that they could see that I was going to take time out that weekend. Look, it, to be fair, it's, even, even now, it is a particularly busy time, because we are now moving into that interesting transitionary period where we are both trying to deliver on an existing programme of work and the delivery of businesses' usual services, but also coming to terms with what it means to assist the city to recover. And I'm really very conscious of my role as the employer to ensure that we communicate with the council about the actions we take to ensure we don't overload our people, and for us to be monitoring that closely. And in fact, that's a conversation I would enjoy having with the council at the right moment.
Thank you, councillor Free.
Look, mine is somewhat similar. I was just wondering how annual leave's going for people, and whether we're building up quite an annual leave liability, if people are not going to take, you know, not, have not had the opportunity to take it.
The annual leave did increase over the month period of lockdown. And now we're looking how we're going to manage that active leave before November. That's a conversation we need to have with staff, and of course, taking into account our employment law requirements is part of that.
What are our employment law requirements?
So, yeah, so we can require staff to take annual leave when it's not entitlement. So we just need to be, you know, mindful of which staff we will be having conversations with, encouraging them to take leave, not just because of managing our, our risk in relation to the pot, but also the health and safety matters that we just talked about with, you know, western recuperation after a really, really intense period. So we just need to make sure, first and foremost, as a good employer, we have conversations before we move to the directing staff to take annual leave, which we can do under the legislation.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
I have a question. It's about the new normal, whatever that is. So we're still to discover what that is. But one of the things I've been really aware of the whole time is that when, I knew that when we came back to some sort of being together situation, that the level of tolerance, people coming into a situation with a bit of a sniffle, a bit of a cough, feeling a little bit under the weather, in a way that we would have usually just pushed on through, the tolerance for that has lowered. So everywhere the messages are, if you feel a bit unwell, please stay at home. I guess council and all businesses are going to have to have a bit of a think about how we're going to manage that with regards to sick leave. Because particularly for families where you put children into the mix. And I had my daughter at home from school yesterday. She had a bit of a stomachache and things. She was fine at the end of the day. But it, it made me think, you know, people, parents are going to be under more pressure to take leave because their children are a little bit unwell, when they would have previously just, you know, soldiered on and gone. And I'm not sure that that's actually a bad thing anyway, because I think possibly we push on too far. But I guess it's going to provide a bit of a challenge for us around sick leave, and whether we're going to have to consider potentially slightly more sick leave for our staff.
I think the comment I'd make councillor Day is that, first of all, one of the advantages that Wellington City Council had going into this very unusual period in our lives is that we already had a very healthy attitude towards flexible workplace and enabling staff, you know, who have responsibilities at home, to be, to be able to respond to those duties in a flexible way, balancing their home life and their work life. What, what we've actually discovered through this pandemic is, is that it has enhanced our ability to do that really well. And the last thing is that we've strictly adhered to the guidelines around encouraging staff who are feeling a little unwell not to come into the workplace, and that's been working well. And you're right, we'll, we'll certainly monitor use of sick leave over time and consider what that means for our operation. But it's early days, really. If I can just add as well councillor Day, our sick leave is above the legislative requirement anyway. And so, so that we do have that little bit of space there. It is something that is, I have been thinking about because of that pressure to stay at home versus soldiering on, which the old Kiwi attitude of she'll be right, I'm just going. And we don't want presenteeism. And so there's actually a really good opportunity to look at that part of, and it's not just a Wellington City Council thing, it's a New Zealand thing. And so, and having that technology enabling people to work from home, if they only just have a sniffle, and they don't actually require to be lying in bed, really relieves some of that pressure as well. So we'll continue to, to look at it.
And yeah, I guess the only one that I would particularly put a play out for is the parents with preschoolers, because when your children are at home sick, they're not really going to tolerate you sitting at your computer all day working. It's much harder to just say, yeah, just go and do something else. So I guess it's just, it's us looking at all the different scenarios and groups and thinking about what we can do to support people. Because it is a season when you have a small child, you know, that really does need you there caring for them unwell. But yeah, those, those are some of the things I'd love to hear.
We, we have domestic leave as well, which enables our staff to look after their dependents.
Great. Yeah, great. Very grateful Wellington to lead the way on this one. Are there any other questions to the paper? Shall we open? The paper to be presented by councillor Calvert. Thank you.
Thank you. And very pleased to introduce this paper. This triennium, we've only ever had one finance audit and risk subcommittee meeting because of COVID. So we were able to finally manage to meet last month. So what we would normally do is we would have a dashboard report in terms of incidents and progress against our our health and, and safety in the workplace. Obviously, over the last few months, things have been a lot different. And I have to commend the officers on, on their swift response to the impacts of COVID-19 on our organisation. Because it was not just about internally with our own staff, but also enabling our staff to provide those emergency welfare services that were so desperately required. And I'm talking about, you know, helping with housing the homelessness, food banks, and all those other aspects in terms of enabling our essential services to carry on. I think we, we had a very useful discussion at the Finance Order and Risk Subcommittee. And I do have to say that the officers have been exemplary in terms of the duty of care. And, and I think this report in some way highlights that, but probably, you know, it is, it is, it is an overview and probably doesn't do the staff's effort justice. So look, I'm, I'll keep it very simple, but look, I'm very happy to, to recommend this report to the committee to receive the information. I'm not sure if I've got a second there.
I'm happy to second this one. I'll just keep, keep it moving. I'm just wanting to echo what councillor Calvert has said. I think I reflect back to the week of the 23rd of March, and how much was going on at that stage. We had a few councillors sick away, because we knew that things were changing. And our staff did an amazing job helping us all transition through that. So not only were we trying to get our heads around Zoom that week, but we were also having to shut down the building and, and respond to that. So I really want to acknowledge the amazing work of Barbara in, in ELT and all of the staff who made that actually go really smoothly. It was, I know it was a hugely stressful time for you all. So thank you so much. And then along the way, I really want to acknowledge and thank everyone for their communication. Barbara, it was wonderful to see your communication with the staff and the work that our HR team have been doing around health and wellbeing, and seeing the hearts and thinking, I think our staff will be feeling very valued and really listened to. And that's what I've heard when I've talked to staff about various things. They seem to be very relaxed and, and feeling that their wellbeing is being well catered for. But yeah, I just really want to say thank you. I think that's, nothing, nothing prepared us for it, but actually council did an amazing job of looking very prepared. So thank you very much for, for that work. Who would like to speak next? I don't have anyone on the speaking order. Looks like everyone's happy to support this paper. All right. So now that we've got it, had it moved and seconded, I don't think we need a right of reply councillor Calvert, because it's really straightforward. So we can now vote.
Just waiting on councillor Paul.
Yeah, sorry, it's just my window's going all over the place. It's full screen, and then it's not, and then it is, and it's not. There you go.
It's unanimous.
Fantastic. So that's carried. Thank you so much, councillors. Your good debate today. Koamutu tinehui. So this meeting is finished now, and councillor Fitzsimons ekarakia. So councillor Fitzsimons will finish us off with karakia. Kapai ngamahekeaki. Thank you, everybody. I hope that you'll have a lovely afternoon. And we'll be, I think we've got something on later on, haven't we? Potentially two things later on.